It is now six o'clock. We will call to order our meeting of the Grand Forks Public School District for September twelfth. And we will start by pledging allegiance to the flag. Dr. Lunn is absent today. He's at a conference for work, so you all get to the honor and privilege of dealing with me this evening. We'll see if I can do as good of a job as he did. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? There was a couple changes or revised. We had an addition of a teacher appointment, an addition of the HR director appointment. So do we have a motion for approval? Second, move by Mr. Larson, seconded by Dr. Shab. Any comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August twenty-second meeting. Do I have a motion for approval? Motion by Ms. Gockler. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Anderson. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I don't have any blue cards, so we will move past the public comment section. Number five, superintendent's recommendations for discussion. Public comment on LEA Return to In-Person Learning Instruction Plan. And board members have a copy of that plan at your table spots. Ms. Glatch.
Thank you, Board Chair Flynn. So at your table, you do have a copy of the updated Return to In-Person Instruction Plan. Just so you know, this is a plan that is required by the State Department. Came online when we first had to react and respond to COVID-19 pandemic requirements. And so since that time, the plan has been nuanced to make sure that is accommodating the current state of COVID-19. The plan this year is quite different than it's been in years past, in essence, because the pandemic has now been cited as an endemic. And we really are moving into that stage where we're looking to make sure that we have response systems in place if and when we need to shift gears in our instruction, in our mitigation strategies, et cetera. So I'm going to spend a little bit of time walking you through the history, because we have some new board members here. Not going to spend a lot of time. I'm going to kind of rattle through things. So if you need to interrupt me, please go ahead and do so. But back in 2021, unlike any other year, that we switched into a combination of various learning platforms. We had some students learning entirely at home, some in the hybrid model. We had cohorts at the middle level. We had pods at the elementary level. We did a whole myriad of things to help fight the pandemic. Moving forward into 2021 and 2022, we started the year, if you can recall, in a high risk factor as well. And so we didn't have in place at that time, all of the mitigation strategies. During that time, the vaccination came onboard. We learned a lot more about the virus itself and how to be preventative. And at the same time, we still had various systems in place, such as contact tracing, cohorting, spacing as much as we could as we returned to face-to-face instruction. At this time, we are really following the guidelines that are recommended by the North Dakota State Department of Health alongside the CDC and how we can ensure that we have face-to-face instruction present and prevalent in our schools, regardless of the local levels of COVID-19. As a district, we continue to monitor the data that comes out of the local dashboard put forth by the Department of Public Health. We continue to monitor as well our own internal metrics as far as absences go and absences that might be related to COVID-19 so that we can track and make sure that we're not overlooking something. Truly, in essence, what you need to know is that of our utmost priorities is to make sure that we are maintaining the safety and well-being of our students and our families and our staff members when it comes to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we're going to make sure that we continue to respond as necessary to make sure that we are keeping those constituents safe. In this packet, you're going to see a variety of practices that we have that include reviewing data. You're going to see that we are tracking campus-based transmission levels, as I mentioned before, and that in essence, we are going to be following what's been out there as far as the infectious disease guidelines, which COVID-19 endemic is now considered. And for the course of time, at least as long as I've been in administration, there have been certain thresholds or levels in which our nursing staff monitor staff and student absences. So for example, I'm going to, and I'm not saying COVID-19 is the same as the flu, but the flu is the example. If we hit a certain level in a building that is 10% or above, we would look to potentially shift operations to make sure that there's not a widespread outbreak in a certain campus. And that is the same sort of strategy that we will follow, that are outlined in those state guidelines for infectious disease control. In addition, you will see a portion in here that talks about us continuing to message to students, to families and to our staff members that if they are ill and they have symptoms and signs, that they continue to be responsible for their own well-being and the well-being of others. We encourage people to test. We encourage people to stay home when they're sick. We encourage people to mask when they might be displaying symptoms to keep others safe. And all of this, people still have the right to choose to take additional mitigation strategies, personal mitigation strategies, if they are so inclined. Our continuity services component outlines just basically how we have expended and dedicated our S or dollars. I think all of you are aware that we have been provided federal funding to help recover some of the learning loss and some of the social emotional loss that has been realized, not just in Grand Forks Public Schools, but across the nation. As a result of the pandemic, when we shifted to online learning, shifted to all these other mitigation strategies, there were losses that were recognized and realized. And so we have continued to invest in additional staff to help with learning loss. That looks a wide variety of ways. It's not part of this presentation, but you've been apprised of that in the past. Some of it is literacy strategist, some of it is curriculum-based. We have interventions programs that have popped up across the district to help recover credits and that sort of thing. We also have a more comprehensive literacy plan and infusion in that basic component of learning. We all know that reading goes across all curricular areas, and so we've been able to really make that strategic effort more robust in our district as a result of S or dollars. And then we're looking for additional pathways for our high school-age students to acquire credits. And so we have continued to employ some online tools to help kids recover credits. We have schools within the school that use online technology. We have some off-site campus programming that again are helping kids recover those credits. And so that's what is listed out in the resources component of this plan. So that's the 1,000 mile an hour update about the in-person instruction plan that is required by the State Department. I guess what I would ask of you is, first of all, I'll field questions at this time, but I'd ask you and I'd ask any of the community members present here today to either ask questions right now or provide input. You can either do that tonight. You can send me an email. You can reach out to me and I'll call you back, whatever works best for you, so that we can make sure that we satisfy the requirements of this plan. So I am now open to questions.
Are there any questions on the Return to Learn Plan? Go ahead, Cynthia.
On the last page, it says public commentary, page seven. Since the original survey, our school board has reviewed this plan annually and sought additional feedback from our broader constituencies. Is this the plan?
Yes, this is the most updated version. And again, this version is a lot skinnier than it has been in the past, Cynthia, because in the past, we had spelled out all of the various learning environments at the elementary and the middle school and the high school level. We still have those mitigation strategies at the ready if we need to exercise them. But this is a much more condensed version that's intended to guide us in those practices and when we might need to shift back, if we ever need to shift back to those practices. So yes, this is the plan, but it's really, I'll just admit it, it's somewhat generic, but intended to be so so that we can just pull out those response systems as necessary, so that most of them are just referenced here instead of listed out.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And then my other question of clarification is, have we seen the survey and the results from that survey?
Yep, that was a couple of years ago, though. That was right on the heels of the pandemic. We could dust those items back off for you if you'd like, but that's what really guided us as far as the investments that we have made for S or dollars. So we surveyed all of our families. It was sent out to the community. I don't know, I'm not speaking for your brain, but everything during the pandemic was kind of a blur for me, so perhaps we just don't remember the results. But if you'd like us to dust those off, we certainly could provide those for you at a future date.
I'd be interested in, I mean, I don't think it has to be at a board meeting, but just to kind of see it again.
Sure, maybe we can provide a link in the Friday Focus. Sure.
Other questions?
Catherine, would you mind just walking us through, what are the recovery opportunities? I don't remember for kiddos in high school. Like, what are the credit recovery opportunities for those kids?
Thank you for asking. So there have been a variety of options actually made available. One is our typical summer school program has with it enhancements, which means that, actually, Mr. Wilbur is here to report out in summer school, they've really bolstered the offerings that they have. They've taken small cohorts of kids and combined them with one teacher to make sure that we have more classes available for recovery. We've done things like look at, it's a riff off of what happens at community high school as far as helping kids recover credits, is that we have given kids credit for the work done. And if they haven't gotten all the way done at their class, we don't make them start over at square one. They call them scraps at the community high school. We call them CRO, which is Credit Recovery, those things. So we really are being more fluid in how we ask kids to provide evidence. So if they provided mastery on the first three units, for example, they could pick up on unit four instead of going back to square one. We've offered online summertime and throughout the year programming. So that's both through the North Dakota Center for Distance Ed and our own teachers facilitating ed mentum online courses. We've enhanced programming at what is called the Sale Center. We've worked with the Mentor Center to help kids recover credit after school hours. So really, we're trying to be just flexible and fluid in allowing additional ways for students to recover credits. You're welcome.
Additional questions? Go ahead.
Are we seeing an uptick in kids staying home or teachers staying home, calling in sick? I mean, I think for my entire life, people don't call in sick when they're sick, but are they doing that now?
I would have to, you know, for that to be a database response, we'd have to pull that data. I believe from the reports that I've had from our building-level principals, people are taking that responsibility to heart. I do know that we've had a number of cases reported. We've had people show up in masks to meetings that we've had even as administrative teams when they're not feeling well and that sort of thing. So I feel like the majority of people are self-regulating, if that makes sense. But again, we can try to get some data and do some comparisons to past years if you're interested.
Other questions? Okay, any comments from teacher group on the Return to Learn Plan?
I'd just say I hear more often than not, it is nice to be back to normal this school year. I hear it all the time. And I can say in my class, I had different kids in and out last week. So it does seem like kids are staying home more than they normally did. And then I had one kid come back with a mask on for a couple of days. So I do think kids are staying home more now than we used to, even though as a mom, I do want to be like, oh, you're fine, just go to school. But I think we're not doing that as often, so.
Any other questions, comments? Go ahead.
I would just be curious if either or both of our student school board members would share what it's like with boots on the ground, what they've seen the start of this year compared to before, if you just have any comments about this conversation. Certainly don't have to, but just inviting your thoughts and feedback.
I'll go first. It is nice to be back to normal. We, for the high school level, we did the cohorts last year, or like my freshman year, which is one of the two. I think from like the online classes that came from the pandemic has opened up like many opportunities for students to stay home and do their school. Like, I know now that my schedule is too full, so I had to take, I had to have a physics class this year and I ended up taking it online. So for me, being able to go back home and now that I have two free periods in a row, I go back home and I do my online physics class, do all my homework that I had. So it's just really convenient. That's just from my perspective as actually having an online class this year, so.
Yeah, I agree with what he said. You know, I think it's definitely good to be back to normal. And I do agree, like people, it's easier for them to be able to miss school because of like the accommodations now with online. So people are more willing to stay home when they are sick.
Additional comments, questions, feedback? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to review of school board norms. Josh, would you read those, please?
School board norms are be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation and conversation, be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, and advocate on behalf of the students and keep the community in mind.
Thank you. Well, now move on to our summer school reports. We'll have Mr. Onsted present first, who probably had a great Monday after a Steelers win, right?
How do you expect me to present when you bring that up? Wow, that was a curveball, Amber. Thank you. So yes, we are Steelers family, so that was a fun day, but a very painful day. A colleague did text me during that game and say, would anybody like to see a video of the Onsted house at this time? So just sidebar. Thank you, everybody. My name's Kevin Onsted. I'm the principal at Phoenix Elementary School and very happily coordinate our elementary summer school program. Welcome especially to our new board members. Some very familiar faces and pretty exciting to have all of you onboard, no pun intended, with us. So first of all, a big thank you to Deb Koopman, Amy Barch, Nicole, Chelsea and Tammy. Those are people in our Curriculum Instruction and Technology Department. They collaborated with us a lot on Really Great Reading for our summer school programming this year, which was something different that we haven't tried before. And you'll probably be hearing throughout the school year a little bit about Really Great Reading and from our teachers that are now getting trained in this platform as well. So I just wanted to thank them for all their support and their help. You'll see in your enrollment summary that we had 1,147 students. I know Brandon, being new to his position, is probably thinking, well, if we were up 225 students, that is more money for our school district, which is a good thing, right, Brandon? So that 225 student increase, I'd like to take credit for that by being a, you know, incredible director, but I think that I have to defer and say the state required us to enroll all students for summer school rather than remediation. And so that was a big shift, right? For elementary summer school, we used to provide only a remediation program. Now we provide a program for all students that can enroll. And so I would attribute a lot of the increase to that. However, you'll see the increase, if you look at your Intro to K numbers, you'll also see that that number is significantly higher. Let's also hope that the elimination of COVID being in the rearview mirror helped our enrollment numbers significantly as well, because obviously during COVID times, it was hard to get people to be convinced that they should be offering or enrolling in summer school programs as well, when they were having a hard time during the regular school year, being at school. So a couple of things I wanted to highlight tonight for you. Our feedback, well, just I'll back up. A reminder that we offered the reading and math program for all students in June and we offered the Intro to K program in August. That was a little bit different than during COVID times. It was also a little bit different than what we've done in the past. This is the first time we've had those two programs separate. The feedback I'm hearing from administrators and teachers is extremely positive. To have those two programs separated in different months and have the Intro to K in August, right on the beginning parts of our school year, just super, super feedback from all the sites and all the people that are involved in our summer school program. Also, I wanted to highlight a little bit of collaboration with Brenda, Dr. Lewis. We, she and I have been working together on summer school and I appreciate her guidance and her leadership because she brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to our programming. And one of the things that she supported this year was two different things I wanted to highlight that you may not be aware of. And it's in your staffing report, along with your enrollment summary, we included on the bottom all of the staffing that we hired for teachers and paraeducators. And then if you look at the way bottom, it mentions two different things. It mentions teacher on special assignment and special education teachers. For the first time in my career as a summer school director, we had special education teachers onsite in some of our schools that really demonstrated a need. And as you know, our children need a lot of support and they need a lot of assistance. And having a few special education teachers onboard at our schools that really benefited from that was really a game changer. The staff at Sentry, for example, has given me tremendous feedback about having those special education teachers at their, at their ready and at their service. So that's been fabulous. The other thing is, we had a couple of teachers on special assignment. That's a term that we stole from Brenda. What that means is we had two people, Kyle Dewitt and Anthony Von Dell. One was administrator currently, but also one was a teacher. And Kyle has accepted a new position, East Grand Forks, as an administrator. But I would use a phrase again from Brenda saying career laddering. Both of them had an opportunity to work in sites for summer school as administrators. So if I wasn't available to be the administrator, and we did it for the last probably almost three weeks of time while our elementary principals were done, our elementary principals are done in the middle of June, therefore, we were running a program without them in their sites, and that usually falls on my responsibility to respond to those schools. Having Kyle and having Anthony also in those sites was also a game changer. So thanks to Brenda for those ideas and obviously thanks to the district for supporting that. I would open it up. If you had any questions, I could try to answer those for you.
Any questions for Mr. Onsted for the elementary summer school program? Go ahead.
So I was curious. I don't see, and maybe I missed it. I thought that there were special camps and I didn't see a report on that. Is that part of your responsibility to tell us about those? Or someone else's, maybe?
Brenda, maybe I'll defer to you, but I will try first. Kayla Erickson, as part of our Encore program, coordinates the Camp Firebird and Camp Mustang that we had at Phoenix and Lake Agasson. We also had Camp Wildcat at Winship, right? So Camp Wildcat at Winship. So those three schools were coordinated by Kayla and her staff. I helped with some of it, but I really wasn't that involved. It didn't fall under summer school programming necessarily. It was Encore grant funding for those programming.
So it's not part of this report at all then in terms of teachers, parents?
Correct, correct.
Okay. I would be curious to kind of hear how that went.
Sure, we can bring that back either in a Friday Focus or at another board meeting. To Mr. Onsted's point, this is really about the summer school programming, but I appreciate you elevating of our three camps. So those were enrichment camps offered to our families in the afternoons. So we're happy to bring information back and present on that, too. So it was a nice opportunity for families that wanted or needed that full-day experience. So they could have summer school in the morning and then they had camp in the afternoons. And some of our students went to both and some just went to the afternoon. And it was part, as Mr. Onsted said, of our Encore programming, which is through the 21st Century Grant. So we'll bring that back at another time. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from Mr. Onsted? Go ahead.
Mr. Onsted, I just have a quick question. So do you think, given your positive feedback, that this, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you think that's how you'll probably go, that's how you'll probably program things maybe this next summer? Is that?
My recommendation to our administrative colleagues is going to My recommendation to our administrative colleagues is going to be a one hundred percent yes. We will follow that same format, have reading and math in June and intro to K in August.
That sounds, I'm glad we had this.
Hopefully they'll onboard.
Oh, good, yeah. Sounds like you got great feedback. That's good. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I, I would just echo that point. When I was able to attend the open house at Phoenix and thank you so much for graciously hosting, what I heard from your kindergarten teachers was so much excitement that it was this soft handoff from intro to kindergarten uh, to the first days of school, both for families but more particularly for students, you know, teachers expressing, I know these kids. They've, right, there, there was joy. There, of course, there's always going to be some of the butterflies. That means it's important and it means you care and it's new. Uh, but I saw it. They were excited to share with me that they were more eager than ever to, to welcome these students back.
And you'll see Dave and board members, we had twenty-nine students enrolled in intro to K uh, at Phoenix and we have, I want to say forty-ish right now. So that means there were only eleven students that did not attend that program. Pretty darn good.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Is that pretty, uh, that last comment, is that pretty true for all of these schools? I mean, you probably don't know total enrollment for all of them because you're closer to um, your own school there, but.
Yeah, I, I don't exactly, but I would tell you that I bet um, percentage wise Cynthia, we could come up with a eighty percent mark where we have almost seventy-five to eighty percent of our intro to K kids intending introduction to kindergarten before the regular school year begins.
And not all of the intro to K teachers are the teachers for kindergarten?
Yeah, we have to recruit some others to do it, um, but many are.
And, and many of the schools though, those are the, the kids attend the schools where they are going?
Yes, they do. They attend their homeschool, yep. And that really obviously lends to them getting used to their routines and their procedures and that was the other thing that we heard from um, analogy that a teacher shared with me was it was very similar to the freshmen starting school without all the rest of the kids in the building for one day, like we do at the high school model. They felt their intro to K kids got the building to themselves and they got to learn before they were intimidated by everybody else being around them for that fifteen day period. Just so you know, the rest of the groups uh, sitting back there saying, Mr. Onsted just set a record at the table or at the mic.
Um, I have just one comment. Um, as a parent of two elementary school kids, I was excited about um, just the opportunity to enroll my students in um, a summer program for no cost. Um, we ended up finding childcare, but I would probably make an assumption that may be accurate that um, it, some of the enrollments may have been out of desperation of not being able to find childcare options and there's programs through the Y that start in the afternoon, but nothing in the morning, so. I think this also provides a really good gap for, for families to drop off their kid, know that they're safe and they're in a environment where they're actually learning and then maybe have something in the afternoon, so. It could definitely fill a childcare need um, going forward as well.
I know one piece of feedback we heard from Park District, um, Bill would remember this, that when we do have the reading math program in June, it does conflict a little bit more with Park District options than it does in August. That's one advantage of having that program in August is that you don't have that conflict with our, our Park District programs, but we're always, we always promote all of our families to take kids out for T-ball and all the Park District activities and they can come back to class. We want them to be as involved as they can be.
Thank you. Let's see, who's next? I think it's Ms. Anderson. Yes, so now it's middle school, Mrs. Anderson.
Okay, now I have to follow Mr. Onsted. Welcome. Um, this is my first year of working with the middle school summer school since um, we moved it to August, so Mr. Wilber didn't have to do both sessions. So um, second year of having middle schoolers in summer school in August for reading and math. Um, second year also that we've had the incoming sixth graders come into their homeschools and have a little bit of welcome to middle school um, to get them used to that, but also get the reading and the math, kind of a head start on the middle school curriculum. Overall, I think it was pretty successful. One, it was difficult getting people registered um, in May and then coming back in August first saying, oh, remember you're in summer school. But um, overall, I think it went very well. We had the opportunity of putting all of our math students into an online tuto- tutoring um, through LaTerra and um, so all the students that qualified were, had thirteen online sessions with a personal tutor that they could get a head start on their math. There was one student that did not qualify. He was to have enrichment during that time. But again, we were able to register any student that wanted to be in um, summer school for reading or math, so that was nice. EL um, was at the South Middle School site. Um, those students were bussed there. They had a robust um, group. Those two teachers out there, you know, called and made sure that those students knew when the bus was coming. Um, and they do tons of other activities just to get those students learning bus routes and they got to bring in their own food on the last day and share it with their classmates, so um, that was really fun to see too. Um, overall attendance, um, I think part of it was we lost a couple just because they had changed their living situation or family vacations and things like that. Um, only one student was out due to COVID, so. That was good news too. Um, we would like to um, kind of implement a more uh, progress monitoring because we had the online tutoring. Um, and so that's something that we can improve on next year is getting the students some sort of assessment so we can monitor, like, is this really doing well? Otherwise, we're just monitoring them now in their STAR assessment window that started today.
Any questions for the middle school summer school? Go ahead.
I don't really have a question. I, you know, I'm looking at the enrollment over the years. It's just not that high. Especially as compared to some of the others, so I don't, I don't know. I, I have talked to a few parents and I encourage them to uh, put their kids in summer school even because the teachers had recommended them. And there was reluctance. Um, so I think maybe emphasizing that it is in August, because that was the excuse I got. Their kids were tired and they wanted a break. I'm like, well, you're the parent, you should say if you need to go to school, but, you know. So I don't know if maybe emphasizing that kids get a break, if that would help with enrollment. It just seems very low to me. It has historically been quite low. I don't know if you have comments about attendance numbers?
Yeah, it's uh, the, the August, we've seen better attendance because there isn't as many conflicts. But also usually the students that are involved in other things, August is their family break time. So a lot of times they don't, they're off to camps and other things, um, and they don't attend. Or they're just, they want a summer break. Hopefully that, we'll see the attendance have kind of an uptick after we don't have a COVID-related school year.
I, I also, and you're right, historically it has been a challenge. A lot of the dynamics that Judy described are accurate. There's also a little bit of a different mentality, I think, at the middle level than there is at the elementary level as far as unfortunately, school being fun. Um, our summer school teachers do a really great job of making sure that they're including different activities and team building and that sort of thing. And so maybe that's something that we can advertise as an enhancement. But I think that some families feel like it's not worth battling the middle school attitude to try to get them to attend summer school. It feels, it doesn't necessarily feel to them um, like it's, I, I hate to say it that way. It's, you know, little school kid, little kids are more excited to go to school, period, I think. And middle school kids are going through that developmental stage where it might not seem so attractive.
And it's eight AM too.
What'd you say?
Eight AM, a lot of middle school students still.
So I think we can take a look at that and, you know, one of the things that we talked about years past was having uh, different sorts of like STEM-based activities, other enhancements in addition to reading and math. I think that that can attract a different crowd. When you look at the success of this, the STEM camp, for example, um, and how that attracts a, a number of students, I think that there may be some opportunities to entice kids differently because it is a very valuable learning experience for them.
Judy, I know you probably don't have all the answers for this, but there's a, there's such a discrepancy in terms of number of students enrolled between Schrader, South and Valley. Is that anything that is going to be looked at for next year to, and I know, again, you have no control over that, but potentially digging into that process to see why that was so different or why that is so different?
Yeah, and our, our counselors and social workers are work, they worked very hard on getting the students, they were known to them, like, we need to get this student in summer school and we register them, but just making sure they were there. That was some of them. We had a higher enrollment at Valley, but then they, just that core group are the ones that came and attended regularly, so. I, I don't know if busing or, you know, other options like that, but that was a really low number for Valley this year, but I, I don't know. There's, I know there's something that, I mean, we sent out reminders, um, but there were still people. The last week of July, they wanted to register their child for summer school because I don't know, I suppose some people are like, what am I going to do with my child now, but.
Definitely something to look at.
Um, were there any um, weather-related schedule changes in terms of it being too hot in some of the schools and the days were shortened for the, for this timeframe?
No, not.
Any other questions for middle school summer school? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, um, now we are at high school. Mr. Wilbur.
Good evening, guys. I'd like to just echo Kevin Onsted's comments and just welcome all of our new board members uh, to, to doing this. Thank you for your service and your willingness to be a part of this. Uh, my name is Mike Wilber. I'm the associate principal at Grand Forks Central High School and I also help coordinate the high school summer school program. Um, just to give you a little bit of background in terms of what we do and how it works, our day is from seven forty-five AM until twelve twenty-five PM. Uh, we have kids that can take half-credit classes or one full-credit class, uh, depending on what their preference is. Um, our students typically are there for one of two reasons. They're either doing it for remediation or they're doing it to try to get ahead, to free up space on their schedules so that they can take electives. Um, our numbers this year were, were lower. Uh, we, we go by seats because you can have a student that's taking two classes, right, two half-credit classes. Um, so our total seat enrollment to start summer school was six hundred and six students. Um, last year was eight hundred and forty-five. Uh, my first year of running summer school was actually the year of the pandemic and so everything was online. It was twenty-twenty. And people were quarantined right at home and, and we had the highest numbers that I can remember seeing at nine hundred and one seats enrolled. So that was a busy summer for us. Um, and we did everything, like I said, online uh, that year. Um, even though our numbers were smaller, uh, I thought it was really kind of nice to see. Um, I should also tell you this, our attendance policies in the summer school is very stringent. Um, so if you're in a half-credit class, you can miss a total of five hours. If you're in a full-credit class, you can miss a total of ten hours. Um, if students miss time, we update them daily, so they actually get an email sent to their house, their parents get it. Um, and they get it and, and basically it updates them on how many total minutes they have left before they're dropped from the class, so the communication is really pretty good. Um, so we always have a few kids that end up timing out for a variety of different reasons. And we also have kids who enroll, our enrollment opens up, uh, we start registering kids and actually right at the beginning of the second semester, so that's like mid-January. And we close enrollment, uh, the enrollment uh, registration process at about mid-May usually. But we'll always have some kids that sign up for a class and then they finish and they end up passing it and those types of things. So there's some movement there as well that we have to account for. Um, but basically at the end of the day, um, we had, we had one student who was actually in the program for the duration, who didn't earn a half-credit uh, because of academic reasons, so we were really happy about that. The kids that showed up actually made it through, which was great. Two new things this year, uh, we, we were at Red River High School for the first time since anyone can remember. Uh, we've always been at Central, um, I think going all the way back to the nineteen nineties, if I'm not mistaken. Um, there were some big capital kind of improvement types of projects at Central with the, uh, with the front steps and then also some, some street repair stuff that was going on outside of the building. Um, we were a little worried, truthfully, about what that would be like at Red River in terms of they already are hosting SPA. Uh, I can tell you from being over there every day, that was a non-issue. It, it was almost, we always laugh about Central because we have the stairs, right? Everybody always complains about the stairs. Red River is so spread out, it's incredible. You just bring walking shoes and get tired. Um, they were, we were housed over in the library area and it was basically a U and we were in the English and math rooms and uh, it, it went really, really well. I was really happy with how that all worked logistically. So that was something that was new. And then the other thing that was new is uh, thanks to Ms. Glatch, um, and also the Mentor Center, uh, we were able to stand up a credit recovery option, Crow, uh, CRO is what we were calling them for some of our students who they were sitting at, uh, we, we kind of went back and forth in terms of what the percentages would be. You need a sixty-four percent to get a credit in high school, right? So sixty-four percent is the lowest D you can get. And so we were looking at, what about these kids that got close? What do we do with them? And so uh, basically what we came down with, or came, came up with, excuse me, was we went from fifty-five percent to sixty-three percent. So if you're a kid that fell in that window for a variety of different classes, uh, we would offer you the opportunity to basically take that class again on Admentum, which is the online platform that we use most often. Um, and they would only have to do the final unit of that class. And if they pass that final unit, so it's usually like five, five assignments and then an assessment, right? And if they were able to pass that with a passing grade, we would give them a sixty-four percent on their transcript, if that makes sense. So the kids would get a D, which gets them that credit. And so, like I said, with the help of Ms. Glatch and uh, the Mentor Center and our technology people, Mr. Compton, like helping us set up call centers, we identified all the kids that would qualify for that moving into the summer. And the Mentor Center staff actually called them, which was great because you have that personal connection. It's one thing to send an email, but when you call them, it's a whole different ballgame when you can talk to, when you can talk to parents. Uh, we had eighty-seven kids at Central that were eligible for the CRO. Uh, thirty of them took us up on it and they earned thirty-five half-credits. We only offered it in the month of June, all right, um, because that was when the Mentor Center was open. So that was a big, that was a big to-do. Uh, and then Red River, uh, they had sixty students that were eligible, twenty-three of whom took us up on the option, on the opportunity and they earned twenty-four half-credits from June sixth through June thirtieth. So we were pretty happy about that and that was a great team effort within the district and uh, yeah, it was, it was a good thing. Only other thing, just before I open it up for questions, uh, just some thank yous. I want to always thank our secretarial staff. It's challenging. I mean, we're, we're ending the school year and starting the school year at the same time and it's just nuts. And they do an amazing job and we're very, very thankful for them. Uh, and then also just our teachers, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's tough to keep kids engaged for fifty-minute segments. They're, they're doing it for two hours, in some cases four hours, and we have some really wonderful summer school teachers and very, very thankful to, to be able to work with those individuals, so. That, that's all I have. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Any questions from board members? Comments? Um, since it was mentioned here and we didn't hear any mention of it, um, is, was the Mentor Center available for middle school students as well? This summer at all?
Through the month of June, it was open to all middle school and high school kids. That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mike, I just have a quick question. If, since the Crow sounds like it was pretty successful. Again, I know you don't have a crystal ball. Do you guys think you'll continue that idea again? Is it a possibility?
I think so. I, I mean, we're open to discussions, obviously, about it. There, there's a balancing act, right? We want to get kids caught up, but at the same time, we also don't want to diminish what the work that they're doing in the classroom already. So we're trying to work through that and that's something that our administrative team will continue to discuss, but it's nice to have something in place now, kind of a foundation to work off of and uh, and yeah, we'll see what happens.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Bohan. Driver's Education.
Good evening, members of the board and uh, welcome to the new board members. My name is Terry Bohan, Principal of Community High School. Uh, during the months of June and part of July, I'm the director for Driver's Ed. Driver's Ed is roughly three hundred students. Uh, this year, a little less than, than average uh, in terms of the enrollment number. Those students, uh, almost all of them fit into the category of a fourteen or fifteen-year-old student enrolled in the Grand Forks Public Schools. There's a few exceptions to that, but that's the general student population. Our families are paying for the behind-the-wheel portion of Driver's Ed. Uh, I noticed when I'm reading this that I, I failed to include the, the Driver's Ed uh, behind-the-wheel fee of two hundred dollars, uh, which we charge to families. Those three hundred students are, are driving with roughly seventeen, eighteen instructors throughout the month of June and July. Uh, they're driving. They're driving in cars that we secure through Rydell and Grand Fork Subaru. So as I always do, thank you to Rydell and Grand Fork Subaru for the vehicles that we negotiate to share. While students are driving, we also have the classroom portion of Driver's Ed and also the simulated driving experience. So I call it a three-tiered authentic learning experience in two-week segments for those 300 students. A couple of side interests that I thought the board might like to know this year, we spent twice as much in fuel in 2022. Yeah, partly because of fuel expenses, but the type of vehicle that you're using also is a variable. So we did spend more on fuel this year by 50%, by double. Our students receive one of two types of completions, or, excuse me, one of two types of certificates. Students who excel as drivers, which is roughly 20% to 25% of them, do receive something called a certificate of completion from our instructors. It is basically our instructors acting as a driver's test provider. They have been driving with them for two weeks. If they have excelled in 15 to 20 different skill sets, they have the ability to award what is called, we call it a waiver. So we have about one out of four students that received that last, last, in 2022. On the other hand, there are about 75% of the students that are still learning, as we all are, learning and practicing how to drive. And it's quite clear in the last few years that our instructors are seeing less and less experience behind the wheel. And that is a variable that makes being a driving instructor a little bit more challenging than perhaps it used to. That doesn't mean that they can't excel and become better. It's just a little bit more challenging for some students, and they continue to have to practice to be prepared to be receiving that driver's license. Lastly, we will continue our plan to work on endorsements for additional instructors. We had three, we hired three interns this year. Two of those three will be staying on next year as fully endorsed Driver's Ed instructors. We can run a steady 300-plus program with 19 or 20 instructors. Those instructors are driving behind the wheel for 23,000 miles in six different weeks of the school year. They need some time out of a car as well. So that's a pretty good balancing to provide a good program. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions from the board.
Any questions? I noticed the expenses were a little more than the revenues that were reported, but the foundation payment was blank. Are we expecting additional funds to cover some of those expenses, or do we take a loss for? Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Now on to SPA.
Yes, I'm covering the SPA portion, and I was perusing Alison Peterson's report, and I was trying to look for highlights, and then I realized the entire report is a highlight. So please forgive me, I'm just going to read, for the most part, from the memo that she provided in your board packet on page 42. So first of all, a registration this year for SPA, Summer Performing Arts rebounded to 975 students. That's up nearly 100 students from the year prior. And in addition to that, there were some parrot educators that were added to the program to help support some of our students with special needs. That helped the success level there tremendously. High school SPA students can receive fine arts elective credits. 147.25 total credits were submitted for Grand Forks Public School students, which is extraordinary. 51 families requested financial assistance, and through grants and donations, they were able to provide scholarships for the amount of $6,950 to 77 students at an average of just over $90 per student. Elementary SPA this summer was held at Discovery, Sharon Lutheran Church. Thank you to Sharon Lutheran for hosting that, and Phoenix in June, and at Red River in July. Sharon Lutheran, because of their wonderful hosting, is named the Super SPA Supporter for 2022. So hats off to Sharon Lutheran. The staff, students and families who have requested, have requested that Discovery be a SPA site in the future because its location and rehearsals and performance space are ideal. And so the reason we shifted programming over to Sharon Lutheran is because of all the construction projects that were happening across the district and its location, its central location. So there were more issues with COVID this year, which was ironic. I happened to attend the Addams Family performance where the understudy stepped in and hit it out of the park. It was absolutely unbelievable how that worked out. And between that and the unfortunate closure of the My SPA program, which works primarily with students who have, are considered medically fragile. That program actually did not complete itself because there was what we considered an outbreak, and we wanted to make sure that we maintained the safety of those students. So unfortunately, we sunsetted the My SPA program early to make sure that everybody was safe. Continued partnership with the EL Summer School Program, and there were guest artists that were brought in to work with students as a supplement to their curriculum, and all of those artists were funded from grants. They are thrilled to have traditional audiences again for the high school performances of the High School Musical and the Addams Family. Several of the nights were sold out, and in all, over 13,000 audience members were in attendance for SPA production, showcase, concert or recital. So a successful summer, as you can tell, and they're grateful for the continued support they receive from the community, the registrants, volunteer staff, patrons, donors, and I am going to add the school board. At the bottom there, you can see the numbers of participation, and on the back, there's a flyer that kind of puts it all together in a nutshell, along with some pictures. So I will entertain any questions. I'm not sure if I'll be able to answer them, but I would certainly take them at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Glatch? Go ahead.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And that is, I just like to put it on the radar for this next year, that we work a little bit, and I've already talked to Dr. Lewis about this, but we work a little bit at getting a little bit more diversity into the main SPA programming. You know, it's, it's wonderful that we had Kathy Quittle King working with the kids for two weeks at the EL program. But what I'd like to see on the stage at the performances is, are people integrated into the program? And so I think we, we just need to be a little more intentional with that. SPA is wonderful, and I, you know, I've supported it. I, I just would like to, to put a plug in to, to try to integrate it just a bit for the upcoming year. So I don't know if that's at the middle school level, maybe even more at the elementary level, so it, so it starts going, getting to be more of a natural thing, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. I do have to give a shout-out. Alison Peterson is not here tonight because she's taking a much-deserved vacation, but I just have to give her some kudos. She took over SPA directorship in the middle of the pandemic and was asked to do some things programming-wise that were making an increase in efficiencies. And what has not lacked is the stellar nature of the performances. So she really has worked with her staff in a way to help bring back the joy in the practice of performance as well as producing these wonderful productions in the end. So I just have to say Alison has been a wonderful leader of that department.
I'm convinced that elementary SPA is just a way to make fun of all the parents when they do the skits. So it's always fun to watch their creative minds and what they're really thinking come out in a performance, so.
Yeah, a parent's job is to keep their kids humble, but every once in a while, there's a payback, so.
Any other questions? Okay, that concludes our summer school program agenda item. Now we will move on to the Career Academy update. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you much, thank you very much, Madam Chair. We've got a couple of people who have been patiently waiting this evening to present from GLG. We've got Mike McLean, and also Sean Senniskall, along with Business Manager Brandon Baumbock. And Eric Ripley is with us, our Executive Director of Career and Technical Education. He's actually in the production booth tonight, so he will be probably stepping out periodically to respond to a question or to provide some commentary toward the end. I listed pretty much all the information on the memo, and I just want to save us a little bit of time tonight, so I won't reread that to you, other than we've been just really pleased to work with Mike and his staff. They've been ongoing conversations on a weekly basis, and we've got some challenges in front of us, and I think Mike and, Mike and the crew will highlight those. So Mike, thanks for, very much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Brenner, and members of the school board. Mike McLean, Principal at GLG Architects, and we've been working hard at schematic design package for the project and just wrap that up. So tonight, we want to give you an update on that, show you the design, and then hopefully answer any questions that you have. I don't know if the screen goes to the next slide. Perfect. Jump, jump ahead here. So want to, real quick, before we get into the project team and the design, step back and just acknowledge all the hard work that happened last fall to make this possible. Over a span of 70 days, there's over 70 community and industry partners that stepped up to the plate to make the, the match on the grant happen. And so that allowed us to be where we're at today and actually start working on the design, which is pretty cool. So our team is composed of, of several groups. GLG Architects is the architect of record. Along with me tonight is Sean Senniskall, who will be talking a little bit more specifically about the building design and, and some of the next steps. We also partnered with Boundary Studio, and they are CTE specialists. So Scott Krenner and Tyler Whitehead have been involved heavily with, with Eric and, and his user groups and faculty, and also engaging with industry partners to really refine the design here through schematics. We're involved with PCL Community Contractors as a construction manager at risk, and Jonathan Lowry is also here tonight. If there's any questions regarding construction or estimates or escalation, ask him those questions because those are hard ones to answer right now. So I'm going to call you out, Jonathan. You're welcome. And then we've been working, again, closely, obviously, with the Grand Forks Public Schools. Brandon Baumbock's been heavily involved during the last few months. Eric Ripley, obviously, has been critical to really developing the plans. And then also getting Darren Johnson caught up to speed here, as he just joined a couple of weeks ago. So he's kind of drinking, drinking from a fire hose, I think, but catching up. And then the Grand Forks CDC has been critical in this as well. Becca Krueger, Keith Lund, they really did a lot of the hard work before the project was even a concept. Did a lot of tours throughout the region along with, with Eric and his team, and they're the ones making the calls to get people to donate. So, so again, we, with all that involvement from the entire community, really, this, this wouldn't be possible. So a little bit about the, the schedule. As I mentioned, the grant application was submitted at the end of last year. That allowed us to get, get approval through the state for the grant, which gave the district confidence to start moving forward on design and programming. And so really, we took ideas that started from that engagement in the grant application, and we started to get into a lot more detail on the program. And so that's where we really, with industry partners and, and faculty and Eric's staff, really determined what spaces and sizes are needed for the project. And then also how those spaces really start to relate next to each other with adjacencies and, and things that make sense for the project. Start to identify how the project could be laid out. Then we jumped into schematic design in the beginning of August and really have worked pretty intensely. You know, weekly, we've been meeting with PCL community and our consultants. Bi-weekly, we've been meeting with the school district on updates, and that constant feedback has been critical to move that fast because it, it was a pretty aggressive schedule to, to get to that schematic design in, in the, in the eight weeks. But that objective was to have initial building design concepts reflective of feedback and informed gathering, information gathered. And so that's where you really start to see the floor plan, plans being defined. The systems are starting to be developed, and, and you can get a good look at your first building design, really. And then from here, we'd start getting into more, more and more detail. So over the last couple of months, four months, really, we've, we've had multiple workshops and engagement sessions, and that, they have ranged from specific industry apartment, industry partner engagements to specific user groups, and then also specific stakeholder groups. The last being an industry partner webinar that we hosted, a two-hour webinar that we hosted on a Friday that, that really dives into each specific program space. And the school district's going to be putting that on their website. I think they're working on that right now. So for those industry partners or anyone interested that couldn't make that webinar, you'll have access to that, and it can really start to see where the design is going. So I'll talk a little bit here about this, the current site plan design, and, and then I'll turn it over to Sean. He'll get into more of the building specifics. So the, the building is located at the former Holiday Inn site. I think most of you are familiar with that location, but it's right off of Gateway between 43rd and 42nd Street, just off Interstate. And the building location is actually just going to be south of the, the visitor's center. And then the area that's in white, that's really the site that's being developed, with the rest of the sites being either other, other parcels that aren't owned by the district, or parcels that are already owned that are in conjunction with the city. We can talk a little bit about that here in a minute. But the buildings for Phase 1 is about 52,000 square feet, and that's that, that orange box that you're seeing on the, in the middle of the site. There's also some phased expansion, program expansion in the, in the light tan color. And Sean's going to talk a little bit more about that when we go through the building plan. So we do have some room on the site for, for alternates and future phase expansion. If we want to talk a little bit about site access, there's a, there's a few ways to get to the building. We have the existing road that runs through the site now on the south side of the visitor's center. That, the plan is for that to stay in place, and that would serve as access for bus drop-off, also for deliveries to the site, and then also large equipment for the building. And as you get into the plan, we'll see that the location of some of the, the high bay spaces kind of lend themselves well to that, to that location for access to the site, with, with 12th Avenue being access for students, faculty and staff with your primary parking on the south end of the site. And then the last feature I'll highlight here is there's a student building area, or student build area highlighted on the northeast corner of the site. And that, that idea is to have, have an area where students can showcase their work or have large pieces of equipment. Really want to bring exposure from Gateway, knowing that it's a, it's a highly-traveled road, and just celebrate what we're, what's going on on this site. There's been some discussions about building trades, actually building homes on, on this location. Right now, they, they do go to the specific sites to build the homes, so actually bringing that back to the campus and then aligning that with the, the Building Trades High Bay Lab. So some excitement things, exciting things we're talking about regarding, regarding that. So I will turn it over to Sean. He can talk about the, the floor plans and then, and the design, and then after that, if you guys have any questions on the site or the plans, we can, we'll be happy to answer those. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As Mike said, Sean Senniskall with GLG Architects, project architect on the project. Want to talk about some specifics as it relates to the building design itself. That is, I guess, the fun part for us, and hopefully it's fun for you guys as well. I'll, I'll use the pointers Mike did to kind of point out some, some of the main features of the floor plan. So as Mike said, about a 52,000-square-foot building that is separated between one and two floors, so a two-story building. Mike highlighted on the site plan, access is really separated between the north and the south, separating the, the daily users, students, faculty, visitors from deliveries and buses on the north side. But they all come together in the middle of the plan here, in, in a space that we call the creative hub. So the north entrance, as well as the south entrance, comes right into the middle into the creative hub. One, one of the things that we heard from students early on as we engaged them is that they want this to not feel like a typical school. They want more of a collegiate feel to it. And so this, this creative hub space is, is really, think of kind of a memorial union-type space, a spa, a space where they can see their, their peers working. They can see integration or interaction between faculty and staff, a really active space with a lot of great natural light and things of that nature. The hub also acts as kind of that anchor point or that gathering point for the building that then distributes into the separate phase or program spaces or uses throughout the building. So as we mentioned, north side is really set aside for buses, deliveries, but also due to the nature of this type of facility, there's going to be a large equipment machinery that needs to come on-site. So what we've done is we've, we've staged those program spaces on the north to be adjacent to that drop-off. So you can see automotive services, precision technologies, Building Trades Labs. Those are all those high bay spaces. Mike mentioned they need the extra heights in order to do the work there, but they're, they're on that north side to accommodate access for those. Even thing, even space like the culinary lab, culinary lab will receive a lot of deliveries. And so accommodating that on the north was critical. On the south side is more of your typical classroom and lab spaces. So we've combined the Engineering, Architecture and Design Lab next to the Robotics and Electronics Lab, and even the Aviation UAS. next to the Robotics and Electronics Lab and even the Aviation UAS Lab, combining some of those similar uses together. And then if I go back to the main entry on the south, just to the right of that in yellow is the administration wing. So that would be where administrators for the building are at, the Career Center, as well as the Wellness Room, located next to the main entry, obviously, for visibility and security purposes. So then if we jump up quickly to second floor, second floor is really an extension of that creative hub on the first floor. We're extending that up vertically onto the second floor, again, to expand that space into two different levels. On the southwest side is, again, typical classroom spaces. The southwest side is the medical lab space, so where you have your your CNA lab, your EMT, EMR labs. Those type of spaces grouped together, obviously, for efficiency. We also have the IT and programming spaces on the second floor. And then the staff collaboration is in the southeast corner. That's where staff have a working area, a spot to meet with other staff, to prep for courses and everything that that they that they do. And then we also have on second floor flexible classroom spaces. So there's classrooms set aside, not tied to a specific program, but that can be used by all. So there's three of those on the second floor and one on the first floor. And finally, I'll just highlight, right off of that creative hub is the Industry Partners Room. And think of that as kind of a boardroom for the project, a space that can be used for meetings or group work, but also it's sized for about 20 people. It could serve as a flexible classroom as well. When we looked at the site plan, Mike had highlighted a couple of expansion areas. So currently, we have two spaces that we're treating as alternates right now to Phase One of this project. One of them is the common space. That common space is a multipurpose room that can serve a lot of different functions, one being events, the other being a really a fun spot to bring in equipment or machinery and test that out for the students in a room that's large enough to to actually handle that type of demonstration. And then we also have welding, which is planned for the southwest corner of of the the first floor. As we kind of balance inflation and additional funding sources, we're gonna be determining whether or not that these can be included in Phase One, or if they need to be a part of an additional phase of the project. And then finally, want to give a sense of what what the building might look like. So in the the lower left hand corner here is a early concept image of the exterior of the building. Again, we heard from students, we don't want this to be a traditional school, to look like a traditional school. We want this to look like a modern, exciting, fun place to to attend. And so we're really trying to do that through the form and the massing, but also the material choices and the colors and how it feels as you approach the building itself. The the rest of the images that you see aren't images from this project per se, but they're they're case studies. So they give you a sense of some of the materials that you might see or the way that we're using glass to highlight different spaces. So not meant to be exactly what you'll see on the project, but meant to give you kind of a flavor of what can be expected. And similarly with interior photos. So these are not renderings or images that you could expect in this building, but it's meant to give you an idea of the the feel and the finish and the scale of spaces to give you kind of an overall quality of what you might expect in this in this building. These are all projects that Boundary Studio, our partner, had worked on in other capacities. And then finally, I don't mean to go into these plans, but these all just give an example of the work that not only Eric Ripley and his staff did, but all of our stakeholder and industry groups shows kind of the breadth of information that we covered in a really short period of time from equipment that's necessary for the spaces to finishes and things of that nature. So I don't mean to go into to detail here, but I want to just give you an idea of all the hard work that individuals from the district and our community put into the first portion of this project. It was it was really quite remarkable. With that, I'll I'll welcome up, I'll welcome up Brandon Baumbach to give us kind of a funding update. While he makes his way up here, I do just want to take a moment to thank Eric Ripley for all the hard work that he did. Not only does he have a day job with the school district, but he also managed to be such a tremendous liaison and guide and leader for us as we progress through this project. So many thanks to not only Eric, but but his staff. And with that, I'll welcome up, welcome up Brandon.
Here he comes, I think. I thought maybe he was gonna come and make the remarks I'm going to make, because it was his job, but no. So members, thanks, Sean, for the presentation. If if it's not evidenced through that presentation, thanks to JLG, Boundary Studios, PCL Community, EDC, and all the industry partners, and of course, all at the school district administration level and therefore, I mean, the evidence is that we're ready to go on this project. I'm here to bring just a little bit of bad news here, is that we can't quite go yet. As as you'll recall, the state provided the match, $10 million match for this project. That would bring us to about that $20 million project. And those dollars are sourced from federal sources. And so as much as we have the state permission to go forward, we've been granted the money. We're still waiting on US Treasury to give us that final go. The the federal source of these dollars, a certain amount of those have been provided to every state in the country. So we're watching closely as other states are approved in their funding requests. And we're seeing a theme that if you're investing those dollars in the fiber networks and connectivity across the state, you're getting yeses. And shy of that, you're not getting the affirmative go ahead just yet. So even for the state of North Dakota, we've received a partial yes in our application pertaining to fiber connectivity. The portion that is a part of our project and the source for our project has not yet been provided to go ahead. So just shy of of that go ahead, it would be, you know, most fiscally responsible to wait for that to come in, given half the source of the the project financing. So this has given the administration and our team pause on the timeline that we had laid out. And again, thanks to aggressively meeting the timeline we laid out, this is just where that funding update is at. So though although we're all committed to this project, it's it's not yet there to move forward at the same pace as originally anticipated. Now, with that being said, the state of North Dakota recognizes those challenges, and they're working through options to intervene. Some of those would include basically the state sourcing those $88, $88 million committed and and sort of supplanting the federal dollars dollars involved. And we've seen that model with other states where they say, okay, well, we'll commit those dollars to fiber connectivity and then find another source of those dollars. Of course, this takes a little bit of time, too. They need to reconvene in session. And so the timeline, we're tracking closely on this. But just last week, North Dakota Workforce Council also had voted to request the $88 million be put into the governor's budget to make that request. So there's there's movement in that direction. Further, they voted to request an additional $40 million to offset additional costs that we're seeing in labor materials as they've escalated over this time that we are waiting. So in summary, the commitment is steadfast to the project. All partners are eager to get going on this thing, as I know all of you are. But for the moment here, we need to wait and see if those federal, if the federal commitment comes in or if we're relying on our state partners and to show the leadership that they're showing to come through. Eric, you can jump in and and take care of what I missed.
Thank you. Good evening. Eric Ripley, Executive Director for Career Technical Education Technology. Brandon summarized it quite well. We're really in a holding pattern. Tonight was very timely for us to be able to, on behalf of the team, JLG, PCL Community, Boundary Studios, EDC, and everybody else that's involved, to really present to you where we're at in schematic design, which is exciting to see that, exciting to see the conceptual idea of bringing this Creo Impact Academy from our application concept to a reality. But Brandon certainly phrased it well with our funding update. We're just in a holding pattern, waiting for the federal government to decide if they're gonna release the the funds that have been allocated to the state, or if an alternative source of funds need to be identified through perhaps this upcoming legislative session. And so with that, that's kind of where our update is at as it relates to funding right now. And that's actually the end of our presentation as well. But at this, we do have team members that are here, Jonathan Lowry from PCL Community, again, Sean, and Mike from JLG, myself, Brandon. We're more than happy to stand for any questions that the board members would like to ask.
Are there any questions at this time?
Is there advocacy that we need to be doing? Is there something that we could be doing to, like writing to somebody to encourage them to get that done?
Which level, which level are you referencing, federal or state?
Yes, either or both, whatever you would recommend. That was my, do you have a recommendation, I guess?
I think all signs are pointing to, again, as Brandon referenced, to the Workforce Development Council's recommendation, I think all signs are pointing that the state potentially pick up the federal share of the $88.3 million and essentially use those federal funds for something else, some other need within the state, let's say broadband, infrastructure. So that would be a request at the state level. That would be a request of our local legislators in this upcoming session to consider doing that, not only to replace the federal funds with general fund dollars, but also, as Brandon indicated, there's a delay that we've encouraged or encountered, not encouraged, but encountered with these delays. And with the the delay comes an increase in inflationary costs. And and again, Mr. Lowry from PCL Community could certainly speak towards that, the the idea that as we wait month after month, there is a increase in cost. Short summary, it doesn't cost any less tomorrow than it would today to build the building. So the longer we wait, the more that the project goes up in in cost, at least following trend data. And so there's an ask at the state level also to help cover some of those inflationary costs. Not unique to Grand Forks, but we're seeing in all the projects across the state. At the federal level, we've been working closely with Senator Kramer, Senator Hovens Office, Department of Treasury, Department of Education. And really, we just, we don't really have a lot of information to go on. Department of Treasury works directly with the Office of Management and Budget at the state level. Again, this isn't impacting just our project, but the 11 other CT projects that were approved at the state level. But again, I think all signs are pointing to looking at the state to replace the federal funds at this point.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'm just wondering, you know, we have legislators coming to appear. Should we give this presentation to them when they're here? And then emphasize that, I mean, there are local legislators and and ask them to go to bat for us? I mean, it may take up a little longer time than that night is supposed to be, but I think this is a very important project that we can lay it all out to them. And then instead of us calling each of them, they're all supposed to be here right in front of us. We just lay it out right in front of us, tell them we're on a holding pattern, and it's not our fault for being on that holding pattern.
It's a, it's a great suggestion, Mr. Palmasino. I know, as indicated on the partner slide, this, not only the community partners that have invested, you know, pledged financial resources. Obviously, this is a priority project for the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Corporation, the entire Team Grand Forks. They're very aware of the delays that we're experiencing. And I I think that they are looking at the Team Grand Forks plan as they make out their list of priorities. And at the same time, you know, not to steal Dr. Brenner's thunder, I know that he's worked with superintendents from other districts around the state. Again, we're not unique in Grand Forks. There's a lot of districts waiting for these federal funds to show up and how that is impacting their project, both from a time standpoint and then from a cost standpoint, the longer we wait, inflationary costs. And I think that there's a commitment of those superintendents also to be advocating for some some state intervention, if that's where it comes to.
Other questions or comments?
This isn't a question about any of that. This is a question about, remind me, kids will, students will not be in the building all day long, right? They'll be coming from other places to use the building. I just, when I was looking and listening and watching the plan, I was thinking about, does there need to be like a, you know, a place for students to go in case they get sick? That kind of thing. And if you, I don't know, I didn't look at the detail there, but maybe you could comment on that.
Yeah, no, it's it's great catch. A couple of points. You're absolutely correct. The idea would be is the schedule that we propose is a block schedule. Students would take courses two hours at a time. And and that would then allow students that are in our rural communities to perhaps start their day at the facility and then transition back to their homeschool so they can complete the rest of their their school day, you know, their math, their sciences, their English is at their homeschool. Same for Red River and Central students, the idea that they would not be having to sacrifice hours at their homeschool to partake in courses here. How do we stagger the schedule so that they would show up, take their dedicated CT course, and then transition back to their homeschool? And and looking at a two hour block timeframe to kind of justify the travel time involved with that. Related to the the question about wellness, I think it's referenced as the Wellness Room on the plan. It was referenced as that. It's really, you know, what do you do with a kid who's not feeling good and maybe waiting for their mom and dad to show up, right? That that's the idea. And so you're exactly right on that.
I saw the Wellness Room, and I didn't know if it was related to physical fitness or if it was.
Yeah, related to exactly like a sick bay, right? There you go.
I suppose they could go up to the second floor, too, and be a real life human experiment on the CNA floor.
Yeah, there you go. Lots of medical careers teachers on site, so.
Other questions or comments?
I'm curious about what work has already started. I know there was some, the city had some initial things that they were doing in terms of the existing building and getting, so is that moving along despite having the funds already available?
Sure. Kind of referencing over to Mr. Lowry, if he wants to talk from PCL. I I'll tell you that if you drive by the Grand Forks and in suites, the former Grand Forks and in suites, it is a pile of rubble. There's not much left of it, which isn't a bad thing at all. But Mr. Lowry and his team from PCL Community, they can certainly reference, I think he said he drives by there about 10 times a day, so.
Jonathan Lowry, I'm area manager with PCL Community. So an update on what has happened there at the site. As Eric mentioned, the site, the building has been demolished. It's being hauled off in truckloads and parts and pieces. The sign is still in place, and there's one stairwell you can see that's still sticking up above the ground, but the rest of the building has been torn down. In early discussions and preparation and talking with being that that building was being demolished and backfilled by the city, we encouraged one of the local trade contractors to assist us through an in kind effort to properly backfill and compact that space. So as the building is hauled out and removed, undercut is taking place, and they will backfill it. We do have a geotechnical engineer who is also providing daily observation as they go back with the lifts of dirt to replace. So when the site is ready, completed, or rather, when we are ready to begin construction, the site will be ready and properly compacted. It was also an effort to reduce overlap and costs between the city and also the 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 school district. So fortunately, we were able to convince some of our industry partners to make things better for the project, learn long term, and also minimal impact to future construction that's gonna take place. Any questions? Does does that answer your question for that? Sorry. Anything else on the construction side of things, since I'm here?
Any other questions? Okay. Other questions related to the project at this time? Thank you very much. We'll now move on to NDSBA opportunities for board member development. Dr. Brenner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My pages are different than yours, so whatever you have in your updated packet, mine is page 60, the old packet. But there's a memo in there from me regarding the School Board Convention that's coming up on October 27th and 28th. So just a couple of reminders, the new member seminar, which is required by Century Code, elected school board members should attend within one year of assuming office. So we do certainly have some new board members here who would be able to attend this go around. That would be on Thursday, October 27th. The law seminar is also held on that day. And the annual convention usually starts that afternoon of the 27th, and then the the convention runs through the 28th. Everything will be at the former Ramcoa Hotel, now called the Bismarck Hotel and Conference Center. And if you are interested in attending, please make those arrangements through Cindy Johnson. She'll make sure your rooms are secured and that your mileage is taken taken care of. And any meals that aren't provided during the convention, you'll be reimbursed for that. So everything travels through Cindy, no pun intended, all right? So that's what I have on the School Boards Convention. Just a side note that both Brandon Baumbach and I will be there as well. Just a side note that both Brandon Bonbuck and I will be there as well.
Thank you, Dr. Brenner. We will now move on to the Valley Middle School pre-refereendum update, which is a part of our strategic plan area item three. Dr. Brenner.
Thank you. Just like the previous presentation by GLG, we have Icon Architect representatives here tonight, Kyle Kwame and Tom Wesley, and I've been intimately involved in weekly meetings with Icon along with our leadership team and they have been nothing but exceptional, exceptional throughout this process, keeping us informed relative to what's going to happen each and every week, deadlines, due dates, et cetera. And they always leave the meeting the way it's supposed to be. They are doing the work. We give them the information, they do the work. We might have to provide some communication links to staff and principals, et cetera, but just been real, real pleased with Kyle leading this project and I welcome Kyle and Tom to the podium tonight.
Thank you very much, Vice President Flynn, board members. Just a quick update, just want to let you know some of the things we've been doing. We have been meeting regularly, we've completed all of our walkthroughs, so we've had at least one group of our team through every single building, sometimes once, sometimes twice, sometimes three times. Going through right now with our costing consultants, construction engineers is going through and working through the costs. We have all of our mechanical and electrical narratives and updates from CMTA delivered. We actually got the, the final copy of one today. We're in, we're right on schedule with what we're trying to do as far as tracking forward with finalizing the assessment. So again, just a quick reminder, the assessment is three pieces, so the capital maintenance, so roofs, big picture things, not light bulbs. And then the next thing is the code compliance. So those two pieces don't actually improve educational delivery, right? It's just cost of doing business to be a public entity. And then the third piece is the educational adequacy. So that's what we actually spent a lot of time with yesterday, or not yesterday, last week. We went in with, into every single school, met with the administrators and PTO, had some really great conversations, it was a little bit of a whirlwind, but really good messaging, really encouraging. Your parents and PTO teams are just super engaged. We were really kind of blown away. I mean, there was actually a competition, I think Kelly took it with most PTO members present, I think they had seven?
Seven, yeah.
Yeah, so Century, there was a, there was a lot going on there. People really wanted to be the number one PTO represented school. So it was really great to go through that. We also, as Dr. Brenner mentioned, we did surveys through Survey Monkey to all the different administrators, so we got twenty-six responses on that. We also, and some of those common themes, collaborate, collaboration space, air quality, obviously, you know, lack of special education, instruction space and need for secure entrances. So if we were to take, you know, I think maybe it's like eighty pages worth of responses, those, that's our way to boil it down to four kind of quick high bullet points. Again, to reiterate what we said last time, all of that data, every single line will be available and made public. So we'll have summaries, but you'll be able to dig down deeper. And then going on to the next piece, you can see we, we sent then just a slightly modified survey with the help from the administrative team to the staff. We had over six hundred responses from staff members, we're really pleased with that, there was really good representation from every school. Again, a lot of some of the same things. One thing that was pretty consistent that we saw in this survey as well as with our, our discussions with PTO and administrators was that secure entrance. It's really, it was fun to go through that process and talk with the administrators and the PTOs and say, you know, let's not talk about dollars, let's just talk about how would you change the school if this wall is stopping you from delivering some program or that window is inhibiting a student from X activity? Let's go through those things on how your school could be a better school. And it was really, really powerful to hear kind of a almost universal message on, well, secure entries are really a huge issue and then specialized learning space is huge issue. So again, we'll, we'll provide all that information to you guys. It was just a really great experience, it was kind of a whirlwind. We, some days we had six, seven schools in one day. You know, we really got to get to know folks a little bit better and spend some time and, and understand some of the things that are going through the schools, you know, it's, you know, restrooms and things like that, that, you know, we, we walk through it and we still don't really realize how many staff members are using one restroom and to sit there for maybe fifteen minutes and just watch the door and, I mean, in a appropriate way, but just, you know, what, all these people just continuing to, and it's just like, we can do better, you know? There's some, there's some really great ideas and great thoughts that we can do there that are things that would be very valuable for our, for our students and staff. So again, going through the PTO, so last week, PTO administrators, really, really great time. What was really nice is kind of walking them through, you know, basically the presentation that we gave you guys a month or two ago, just this is the process, here's where we are and this is why we need to talk to you. What you're saying is very important and, and in fact, you're, what you're saying right now is going to be published as part of everything that we're doing. I think it was really great to just answer those questions kind of in the moment. I feel, I feel confident, you know, there's some administrators that were here just before us that they know where we're going, they, they get it, right? And those things that we talked about, that the staff and PTO might want to change, those are things that we need to vision, envision, what's phase two, what's phase three, what's phase four? You know, we're working very diligently on this, this phase one of bringing something to the public, right? But we also want to make sure that if there's a dream, maybe it's not happening right now or there's a need, maybe it's not happening right now, but let's, let's note it, you know, let's give something for, you know, Darren and his new role to, to worry about, right? He's got, just otherwise there's nothing else going on. So want to make sure that he has plenty to think about and, and also what's just, what's the vision, right? So with that, our next step, so we're meeting tomorrow to, to start discussing some of the initial conversations around survey language, that will be finalized, or that will begin work in earnest in, in October. So we're finalizing all the assessment data. We're playing around with how we can best present that. We're currently at over three hundred pages at the current draft and we're, we don't even have any of the staff input in there yet. So we imagine that if you were to just print this book, it wouldn't be an efficient way to really understand and take in all that information. So Dr. Brenner's kind of challenged us to come up with a live document that's, we really appreciate that, by the way. We're working on it right now. So we're gonna, we're gonna get there and that's going to be something that hopefully will, oh, I'm just, am I going the wrong way? Yeah. Hopefully will allow us to really just make sure that everybody knows what's going on, why we're talking about what we're talking about and what's the data behind it. Oh, I mean, this is just, I'm just going crazy here. And maybe that was enough, there we go. Nope. There we go, all right. Yeah, I'm gonna let you hold this for me. Yeah, here, all right. So the next step, so we're, we're talking about the survey language. What's really great about that? So in the, in the month of October, we're gonna, we're gonna go through the survey, finalize what those pieces are based on the assessment. So we're gonna have lots of different questions, really excited to start to explore that. And then those questions will get put out to the public in November. So the plan is that the beginning of November, we'll have a public survey, go live, every residential address will get a, get a postcard with a QR code and the website and then we're going to have printed copies of the survey at every school. So if folks aren't able to get online, don't want to get online, they can just pop into any office for any school, grab the survey, turn that in. We've got commitments from every PTO to help share that message. So we're really going to push that we need engagement on that. Without data, we, we have nothing, right? So we need people to tell us what they're thinking, how they're feeling. So that's going to close before Thanksgiving. Those results take a few weeks to come back, that'll be beginning of December when we'll have those results back here presented to you guys. Then that will turn us over to January for our kind of community design sessions that we talked about a little bit in the last time. So that will use the assessment data along with the survey data and be a very kind of choreographed, you know, small group experience that's going to be really interesting, that is kind of a three-parter. And then the outcome of that will come back to you guys, we imagine, at the end of February. And then based on everything that you guys have seen, you'll make some direction or give us some direction or decide to take something public, there'll, there'll be lots to talk about then, but that kind of takes us right to kind of spring, which is what we're thinking as far as potential vote timing. Any questions?
Any questions for our friends at Icon? Go ahead, Cynthia.
I'm just full of questions tonight. I had a question about all these walkthroughs that you've been doing. Are you seeing any immediate needs that aren't on any of our current lists? Because quite frankly, we've had a lot of lists and we've seen a lot of needs, but I'm just curious whether you've seen anything that, that we, that you don't think we, we know about, that, that you think is really in need of care right now? Have you, have you identified any of that?
I would, I would say yes, there are some needs that have come up or that, that we've, that we've witnessed on site that have not been on the list. There's some code complacency, accessibility complacency, some, you know, just functional needs. But there's also some things that have, that are on the list that may not really be in the immediate future needs, you know, that, that's the part that we're trying to kind of scrub through and vet out is formulating what is the plan moving forward and what are, what are our priorities, especially we're talking with the staff, talking with PTO, what those needs are. Obviously the accessibility is kind of, and security is the top of the list that we've, is the common theme throughout, but I would say there are, that's probably one of the things that we've, that's probably on the list, but where it falls in the priority, I think is probably higher than we expected.
So, go ahead.
And just to address the, you know, there, there was lots of lists and we were able to bring kind of everything together and the goal is that all those lists will go away and there will be one kind of, one consistent, no, I wouldn't say concise, but there'll be one list. And, and that one can then be hopefully used and updated as things are, are knocked out and we're working with, with Darren on how's the best way for us to present that for him? So it's not that it's just here, take it, you know, we have all this information, let's make sure that we set it up for success so that he's able to use it.
So the reason I'm asking is, the referendum is for a middle school, right? But you're, you're going out and you're looking at the elementary schools too and did you do the high school and?
Yep.
Yep. And so I just, even since the last time this was done, I would think that there could be things that would be new that nobody has spotted before or identified in the building. I mean, I'll just use my own home as an example. We've identified, we've had our garage redone and there were new things that came up as we redid our garage, right? Which we didn't know about six months ago. And so that, I just want to make sure that as you're communicate, as you're finding these things, that we get that communicated out to the administrators and the buildings and grounds, because I, I, I've heard some things within the schools that are of concern in the buildings and I just, that I'm not going to reveal right now, but certainly could later. So just wanted to make sure that that communication is happening.
Yep, absolutely. And, and to touch to the point about, you know, Valley is the priority, Valley is the reason we are here, you know, we ask to do more, frankly, but with the opportunity to in, to do a survey for the entire community, that's kind of this special thing, I think our goal is to, to take a synopsis of all of this information and make sure people can see it and people can weigh in. And maybe there's going to be ten different questions on all these, you know, as a, as a taxpayer, would you agree with a vote five years from now to replace this? As a taxpayer, would you agree for a vote for, in eight years from now to update these things? There's lots of things that we've identified that we think need to happen, but probably not right now, but that doesn't mean that that shouldn't be something that the community's made aware of and that the community knows that, hey, here's a plan, you know, us, you know, us as a district, this is how we could potentially tackle it, what do you think? You know, again, Valley's a priority, but we want to make sure that we're going to let the data be shared and if people want to give feedback, they can.
Yeah, my question is also, we, we've worked with Brandon and the finance committee with our money available from our, our bonding that we've done. And I've noticed a couple of times here, you've said that some of the air quality issues will be addressed in the twenty twenty-three next summer. Is that still going to be a priority too, as well as Valley, because of the air quality issues we had through, two, a week ago? You know, and I think in the business, you always think earlier bid in the year is better than waiting, because we know we have, with the problems with ordering supplies, ordering equipment, we only have, you know, May, June, July and August to get this work done. Is that on your radar to make sure that we can do that, plus the safety and security that we, we have talked about? And I don't know who, I'm looking at four guys, whichever one of the four, one I answered.
Yeah, no, thank you. I'm happy to weigh in on that because there's a number of different projects and sources that are gonna, that are gonna take care of a lot of that. In fact, the, the energy, guaranteed energy savings program that we recently brought to the table, that's going out for bid now for work in the summer and, and we're looking to address three schools next summer for air conditioning and, and cooler temperatures and then two the following year. And so these, that's going to take place. Furthermore, with the last successful referendum for the additional ten mills in the, in the building fund, we've bonded some of those dollars and we'll be looking for, you know, security upgrades. And so those, those projects are progressing in addition to this work. And I think that the real value Icon is bringing is that it's really bringing it holistically together. Not only has just time passed for that assessment of the quality of those buildings, but, you know, the pricing, you know, materials, labors, like we've talked about a little bit, you know, all night, we need to make sure that we have a realistic picture of that. So come the decision on a new Valley Middle School, we, you know, everybody is aware of just the administrative plan to tackle all of this stuff going forward so we can properly budget.
Other questions, feedback, comments? Go ahead.
Since you brought up AC and that AC plan is, it just the schools that have no AC or, or the few number of schools that only like half of the school has air conditioning and the other half doesn't, is that also, those schools also in that plan to get the whole school to have air conditioning?
Yes.
Okay.
All of them to the quality we would expect.
Yeah, Dr. Brenner, Cynthia.
I just want to reiterate what I've communicated several times to our staff through my Friday video messages, that over the course of the next two to three years, all of our classrooms will have air conditioning. That's not all incumbent upon what Icon is doing for us with Valley Middle School, but they're also seeing some of the pieces, you know, that we have in play. So from the S R dollars that we invested at Century, at Central, at Red River, I'm missing one other school, Ben Franklin, that's going to be taken care of through S R dollars, most of those projects have been done. Ben Franklin, we will finish. And then Brandon talked about the other buckets, the thirteen point four million that we generated through bonding the, the one million of the ten mills, that's going to knock off a lot of the HVAC pieces and some of the safety and security. So I don't want to, I, I just want to make it clear that we're not putting all of that on Kyle and Tom and Icon to get those projects done, but those are in the works.
Thank you. I think the, the willingness for you all to holistically look at our school district also gives us a picture when you're going to survey, or we have those conversations with the public to, to talk about commonalities, like, oh, also, and we have this building that was built in the same time where parts aren't available anymore. And so it gives a, a nice sounding board as a, another perspective to say, let's look at the whole picture as opposed to just one piece of the puzzle. So thank you for that. Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Johnson, but we haven't heard from you at all yet at the board table and would love a formal introduction and if you have any comments that you want to say, I know you're, you're, you're pretty new to the iron here, but.
Yeah, I was totally expecting. All I can say, these guys are working very hard to get me up to speed on what they're doing.
Do you want to come to the mic? We gotta, we gotta acquaint you to the microphone at some point.
Sure. These guys, both, both these engineering companies have been working very hard, architectural and engineering, to try to get me up to speed on what we're doing here. I've only been employed for, what, ten days here, so I'm going to need a little bit of time, but I can tell you this, what they've got going on is pretty innovative and I mean, and then with the CIA Center too, we got a lot of good stuff going on that I'm, I'm excited to be a part of, but I, again, I have to learn a little more about what goes on. But I think we can see some energy savings and some money savings for the district with some of the plans these guys are coming up with. And I think we'll elaborate more in the future on that, not tonight, but anything else I can answer for you?
No, thank you, sir. I, you, you didn't see it, but the camera had to adjust its angle a little bit upwards for.
Anyway, it's a pleasure. Thank you for all endorsing me a few weeks ago, I appreciate it and I'm going to do the best job I can for you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the folks at Icon? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
If we could just also say thanks for all the PTO that gave us their time and staff that gave us their time, because.
And the teachers as well.
And the teachers, yeah.
I know there's a lot of PTO that came that were taking time away from work to come and join us and, and offer some insight on what works for their children and what. what works for their children and what what doesn't. And we really appreciate all their time and commitment and it's really true. And all the facilities that we walked through, all the all the administration and teachers that we had encountered and met with, um, you can tell their heart is in it and they are very proud of where they work and what they do. Um, and all they want is a wonderful environment for their children, so.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval? Bill, second by Cynthia. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is the consolidated grant application for federal title funding. This also fits into oh, did I miss something? I'm sorry, sorry. I I'm working off the old. Okay, hold on one second. I want to get the official item. Our new item B is our appointment of human resources director, Dr. Brenner.
So I will uh, take some of the vocabulary right off the memo that you have in front of you. Uh, on behalf of the interviewing team who interviewed three human resources director candidates on September eighth, twenty twenty-two, I'm pleased to recommend Mr. Griffin Gillespie for the position. Uh, his start date is to be determined. However, I did visit with Mr. Gillespie today and October tenth would actually be his first day with us. So there'll be a little bit of gap between Lindsay Statsted's final day on September twenty-third and October tenth, so I'll likely be taking the the lead role of HR uh, for those interim days. He's presently the director of human resources for the University of Minnesota-Crookston. He has previous experience at All True as supervisor of recruitment. He has a master's degree in business administration, a bachelor's degree in business administration, and he is a SHRM, uh, SHRM certified professional through the Society of Human Resource Management. Uh, the interviewing questions were divided into four themes as illustrated below, and then we added the fifth domain just for the overall experience and position alignment. And following the interviews and the interviewing teams' conversations, Mr. Gillespie was graded out as the most qualified candidate. And you can see the interviewing team listed below. Uh, so we're very excited uh, to have Mr. Gillespie join us on October tenth, provided school board approval. Uh, you'll see that our recommendation is to appoint him as the HR director at a salary of one oh seven, seven twenty-seven. Please note that'll be prorated because he hasn't, he did not start on July one, so the actual amount will be a little bit less than that. Uh, and uh, again, a start date on October tenth, and I would turn it back to you, Madam President.
Do I have a motion for appointment for the new human resource director? Mo- motion by uh, Mr. Berger, second. Second by Bill Palmestino. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Brenner. Our next item on the agenda is the consolidated grant application for federal title funding, strategic plan area three, Dr. Lewis.
Sure, thank you so much. And I will be um, co-presenting tonight with Tanya Schleicher, who is our fund development and grants coordinator. So it's just an absolute pleasure to be able to not only present alongside her, but to do this work with her. And I keep checking the sky because last year we did this in about thirty seconds because it was in the middle of a tornado warning. So hopefully we can have a little more than thirty seconds and the sky looks okay tonight. So um, with that being said, really, what we are asking here tonight is for you to approve our consolidated grant application in the amount of four million, four hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. And we will actually come back to that, um, because Tanya and I will go through what these different um, funding sources mean, how we can use them and how we get to that um, number of just south of four point five million dollars. The first area that we will talk about is under Title One. And Title One is for our district funding at local school levels. And right now, our Title One dollars are two million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars. And then a piece that comes from that is for um, families and students that are served by McKinney Vento, also called our homeless program, and that's seventy-five thousand dollars. Within that, we also have targeted support and improvement and comprehensive support and improvement. And these are different categories that we will talk about in just a few moments that relate to schools that are uh, within a Title One status. Then, Tanya will review for you our Title Two allocations of six hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars. She'll also do Title Three for twenty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Then I'll come back for Title Four, three hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred sixty. You'll notice this total is different than what I had just talked with you in the introduction. These are our funds that we are getting for this year's grant and the original number that I shared includes carryover dollars. So as we get into Title One Part A, this is part of Every Student Succeeds Act of twenty fifteen. It did exist prior to that as well, and it's really for our schools and our district to prioritize um, the student achievement of students in our schools that qualify for Title One. And I'll get into what that means in just a moment. It consists of needs evaluations, strategic planning, data-driven decision-making, and implementation of evidence-based practices. So when Tanya and I work with our sites that receive Title One servicing, we have to make sure that the interventions and the supports and the plan aligns with evidence-based resources and practices. And we do occasionally, um, not too often, but we do hear from DPI that says, Tanya, can you please look at this again? And then we have to make sure that we're complying with that. And really, the um, work of Title One is to close the opportunity gap. Here are our schools that are receiving Title One funding. Um, and these numbers are a little bit deceiving here. I had shared last year that these numbers still reflect pre-pandemic numbers of two thousand nineteen, twenty. The Department of Public Instruction has allowed us to use those numbers uh, pre-pandemic. The reason for that is um, student lunches and breakfast became free for all when the pandemic first came. So then that following school year, our families were not, there wasn't as much of an incentive for families to fill out those free and reduced lunch application forms. So DPI and um, the federal government didn't want to punish school systems for that. Um, to say that now we're going to reduce your Title One funding or pieces of that nature. With that being said, I think if you um, have been tuning into our social media and our parents at um, some of our sites, you'll see we've been doing a pretty heavy push to say, please fill out those forms. October first is really our target date to get those back. Um, then, starting next year, we'll be using what we call current numbers for those, but this is I would say definitely an asset that we've had in being able to use those numbers. And here really talks about the purpose of Title One, and that's really to ensure that we have closures of those achievement gaps. Um, all of our schools are that are in Title One are what's called school-wide programming, um, which is a very good thing. There's something called partial programming, and that gets into practices that aren't necessarily research-based and you literally have to say Brandon can qualify for that intervention, Brenda cannot, because it comes down to uh, free and reduced lunch status. So all of our schools are school-wide, which is a very good thing. And then the needs assessment for each of our schools really guides that work around how we utilize those Title One funds and how we are held accountable for those. The next piece is again, um, local educational agencies receive those dollars, you'll see um, in our summary sheet. We also receive dollars that our private school partners are entitled to as well. So you'll see here, we have a little north of two point seven million dollars. And here is our allocations for Title One. So you'll see that by each um, site. You'll also see parent involvement, and I'll share about that in just a moment. And then you'll see our overall totals. And then you'll see we have something called district reservations, which is a pretty common um, area for grants. And within that, we have um, money that can be used for administrative salaries this year. In our title grants, we are utilizing as much as we can indirect. So that's for individuals that support the um, Title One work in an indirect manner. So we can use some costing from that that we hold back and use that to cover other um, salaries and work that people are doing that aren't necessarily in a Title One site, but doing that work to support the accountability pieces, the funding, et cetera. And then there's something called um, neglected delinquent. That's a required um, set aside that we have to do as well. Activities, you'll see here, um, staffing such as reading specialists, instructional design coaches, Title One coordinators, interventionists, that parent involvement piece, professional development. I'm going to pause there. Tanya, we'll talk about Title Two professional development. This is site-based professional development that's over and above anything that the district offers for um, professional development. So very building-specific um, for that particular site. Then we have um, supplies and equipment. This is that parent and family engagement federally. Any district that receives over five hundred thousand dollars has to set aside one percent to use for parent and family engagement. This is an area to where um, this is, I would say, heavily monitored. So for instance, if you put in as a Title One expenditure, food for families at conferences, we will get a kickback to say, hmm, how does that actually lead to parent involvement? But if you connect it to a math night that provides snacks at the math night, then that's something that we can do. So this is an area that um, we have um, pretty significant accountability on. And then this is our piece that we've talked about for our students and families who qualify for McKinney Vento for our set aside for homeless. And we have um, our homeless liaison that does amazing work with our families and our students. And then we have transportation. Um, so all of our students that qualify for McKinney Vento um, have transportation to and from school. Also, if they are enrolled in our after-school encore program, we provide transportation after encore as well. And then basic needs and supplies for our families as well. This I had alluded to earlier, comprehensive support and improvement grant and targeted support and improvement grant. In your um, slides, these are a links to go in deeper. So these are federal categories for comprehensive support and improvement grant called CSI. Um, federally, uh, schools are identified that receive Title One for this, and it's for schools in the state that are performing um, in the bottom five percent of um, Title One schools. And then targeted support and improvement, it's the bottom ten percent. And with that comes funding in a way that says, we recognize that additional support is needed and will we provide that? Um, the schools that qualify for that right now are embargoed until September sixteenth. There's regulations that go with that um, where we need to do parent notifications, plans, and we get a significant amount of support also um, from the Department of Public Instruction as well. So wanted to elevate that this is part of our grant um, awarded amount as well. And then this um, with our grants, there's a process that our families are able to dispute um, how we're using those funds and um, schools and so forth. Now I'll turn it over to Tanya for Title Two.
Move that mic down and the camera, I'm sure, here. So uh, so the next federal grant we'll review is Title Two. This grant focuses on increasing student academic achievement through strategies like improving teacher and principal quality and increasing highly qualified teachers and principals in the school. Our allocation for this year is six hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. So what we're you currently funding uh, with these activities is some of our elementary instructional design coaches and our secondary um, instructional design coaches. We also fund um, support, salary and benefits for some of our district administration, including our chief academic officer and our assistant of superintendent of elementary education, who is also our Title One coordinator. We also have partial salaries coming out for our elementary and secondary curriculum coordinator. So part of their salary, instead of being in the district, comes out of our Title Two funding. And then lastly, with this allocation, we've set aside some funding for staff professional development. So that's at that district-wide level. So anybody in the district can access these professional development dollars. And it really right now is focusing on our avid training. So um, and just to note that these FTEs are spread out among other funding sources. So besides the secondary instructional design coaches, the rest of the funding comes from other funding sources, so. So um, our federal Title Three uh, grant helps support our English learners to attain English proficiency to meet the same state academic standard contents as all of our other children. These funds also help us develop the highly, a high-quality language instruction program. So this year, Grand Forks Public Schools is going to receive twenty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. It's always one of the fun things for me to uh, get right down to that penny, so. This year, our funded activities will be an EL coordinator stipend who helps our professional development activities for our EL teachers. We have a EL summer tutor that helps our high school students during the summer really close that gap for the our lowest um, level of high school students. We also set aside some funding for instructional supplies that would be supplemental learning opportunities that will support that type of language. We had set aside some money for equipment, which would be a whiteboard or an active panel. And then we do set aside registration costs for our staff to attend professional development training that is specific for English learners. This year, they'll be doing some traveling down to to Fargo for the Building Bridges Conference, so. And then at this point, I'll turn it back to Dr. Lewis for Title Four.
Thank you, Tanya. For Title Four, a long time ago, this used to be called Safe and Drug Free. And it has been expanded to be um, multiple different buckets that you'll see um, as we go through the next slide. Our allocation here is three hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred sixty dollars. And here are the different buckets where we have well-rounded education such as our STEM, arts, civics, um, career counseling college, those pieces, then supporting safe and healthy students. So that's really comprehensive mental health programming, um, chemical health, trauma-informed practices, and that importance of fitness and healthy lifestyles. And then supporting the effective use of technology is really around professional development, blended learning and educational tech devices. And then there's a cap on the spending that is allowed for that. So you'll see within Title Four each of those buckets of funding amounts there. And our current funded activities out of this are our mental health coordinator, our avid coordinator, um, our MTSS coordinators, which we have that one at the elementary and one at the secondary level, our lead elementary literacy specialist and after-school robotics club. In Title Four, there's the emphasis also on read well by third grade. So these are pieces here that you'll see coming through around literacy as well. The um, approval tonight does not involve two other federal grant sources, but we wanted to highlight those for you as well, uh, because they do come in under federal. And that's our Twenty First Century Encore, which you heard uh, Mr. Onset and myself uh, share about much earlier on with when it came to our summer camps. And this is our after-school programming that we have. We have a current allocation of five hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, and this allocation is for the next three years. So we write that grant every three years. And we have um, Encore at nine Title One elementary schools, one Title One middle school, and then we also serve Emmerito Public Schools. And then Indian Ed Grant is another grant that we wanted to elevate for you tonight. And this um, grant, we work with our Indian Ed Parent Council to really look at our funding sources and then to determine the different areas that we will be funding um, through our schools and for our students. So you'll see our. So you'll see our current allocation there for this year is $84,309. And it currently funds activities such as our Native American tutor. We also have Encore fees that we supplement for families that are in need of that after-school programming, our ACT test fees, speaker fees, dual-credit class fees for our Native American students, supplies, and travel. So with that, I'm going to actually end where I started to go back up and to seek approval tonight for the allocations for this year of $3,904,876.97 plus the carryover for an entire amount for a consolidated grant
Do I have, are there any questions on the presentation? Go ahead, Cynthia.
Just a couple. Okay, under Title IV, I just, this is very simple, simplistic kind of. You have the after-school robotics club there. What about the coding? We've heard about coding, the girls' coding, or the, does that fit under technology? And how, I just wondered about that.
I know he's in the tech booth, but Eric, do you have an answer to that? Does that include girls who code? Here he comes behind the curtain. Thank you.
Not a problem. Happy to appear from behind the booth like Wizard of Oz, okay? Pay no attention. No, I appreciate the question. So it would not be covered underneath of the Title IV. We do receive a separate non-traditional careers grant from the state of North Dakota Department of CTE. That would cover specifically the Girls Who Code Club. But specific to, and Monte was one of our former advisors of that. So she knows very well what that program offers for our students. The Title IV really has been though instrumental in helping us to expand VEX robotics clubs at specifically the elementary level over the past couple of years here, actually. So that is being covered by the Title IV. Girls Who Code gets covered by a separate grant.
Thank you. I do remember the demonstration when, in the past, board members got to see a demonstration of their robotics. But I wondered about Girls Who Code, so thank you. My other question is about the Native American piece, which is which that's the Indian Education Grant. So you have a tutor there. I thought there was a Native American coordinator as well that the district had.
Yes, so we have this, Native American tutor was a new addition that the parent board had wanted for last year, and we're continuing that for this year. And then Chad Ward is our Native American coordinator. And he works to serve all of our schools. So that's not a new position, but that's another piece of the grant. Thank you.
Under this funding then?
He is. We didn't have an exhaustive list of everything on here. These are just some of the highlights. But yes, he's funded under this grant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other additional questions at this time? If none, I would ask for a motion for administrative recommendation to approve the 2022-2023 Consolidated Grant Application for the Grand Forks Public School District in the amount of $4,455,397.95. Motion by Dr. Shab. Second by Ms. Gockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we will hear the authorization for sale of Building Trades Project House from Dr. Oz somewhere. Oh, Brandon, I saw Eric's name.
I was just curious if he was going to jump back out or not. No, I'm happy to introduce this one, of course, if there are any questions. You're right to recognize that Director Ripley knows much more about it. But each year, motions made from the Grand Forks Public School Board as part of selling process for the Building Trades Project Home. So Instructor Ben Mowen and his students have stated, started construction for the 2022-2023 school year's house located at 3085 44th Avenue South. And a part of the selling process includes school board action to designate that the school district representatives to handle the closing of that transaction. So the following paragraph on the, on the staff report here reads the kind of motion we'd be seeking tonight, no different than years previous. But that would be to authorize the school board president or his/her designee and business manager to sign the required closing documents for the sale of the property as mentioned.
Would someone like to read this nice paragraph in bold?
I move that we authorize the school board president or his/her designee and business manager to sign the required closing documents for the sale of the 3085 44th Avenue South residential property.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Anderson. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Must have been on a delay back there that Mr. Oz appeared out of nowhere late. Okay, item E, Policy Review. Are you just going to, Cynthia? Thank you.
Yeah, good, thank you, President Flynn, or Vice President Flynn. Okay, so we are just going to do an expedited one reading of this policy. This is policy BDA, which is the, I'm sorry, FDI, transgender and gender non-conforming students. And the reason for the one reading is because it's one word that's been changed. The word has been changed from grooming to personal appearance. And it reads, "Gender expression is how a person expresses their gender, often through behavior, emotional expression, mannerisms, dress, personal appearance, interests, and activities." So just that one replacement. This had already been approved by the board in April of 2021. I would make the motion to approve policy FDI.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Gockler. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
And next on the memo there, you'll see that we, it was provided for us in our packets, the administrative regulation that goes along with the policy transgender and gender non-conforming student procedure policy that we just made a motion for. But I'm going to have Dr. Brenner talk about the changes that were made to the administrative regulation regarding specifically, we made changes to the parent notification piece. You'll note in this document that we've got procedures in place for pre-K through five, six through eight, or six through 12, sorry, students' grades six through 12, and then for students over 18. So Dr. Brenner, if you want to talk about that, please.
Thank you, Dr. Shab. I'm happy to. First of all, I'll take you through the privacy and confidentiality component. If you recall, probably the, the most feedback we've had was based on the interpretation of the policy. And the interpretation by some parents was we would not communicate with them if a student identified as transgender. That really wasn't the case, so we wanted to add a little more clarity to it. But just to bring a little bit of a historical piece to that. Typically, when a student does identify as transgender, that student usually has a meeting or several meetings with one of their counselors assigned to them. And the recommendation through conversation that the counselor has for the student is, have you shared this information with your parent? Most often, that is the case. Once in a great while, that is not the case because the student has not felt safe if they would disclose that information at home. So we tried to, not tried, we really worked to finesse the language that would be perhaps better received and more palatable for our parent community. So just under the privacy and confidentiality piece, I'd like to take you to, to that first paragraph. The district recognizes that under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, parents, guardians have the power and the right to receive information about their minor students and receive educational records when requested, regardless of whether the student wants their parents or guardians to have such record. Information about a student's transgender status, transition process, preferred name, preferred pronouns, gender identity, or gender expression will be disclosed to a student's parent if the student is under the age of 18. That's, that's the new, the new wordage that we have. If the student articulates a specific identifiable and substantiated concern that such parental disclosure could lead to child abuse, neglect, or some other legal conduct, school staff shall not disclose information about the student's transgender status, transition process, gender identity, gender expression, preferred name, or preferred pronoun to the student's parents or guardians. So again, this is all about wanting to be transparent with our parents. But the final piece of that is we want to make sure our students are safe. The next paragraph, in the event a student articulates a specific identifiable and substantiated concern that the parental disclosure would lead to child abuse, neglect, or some other illegal conduct, the district will encourage and work with the student and utilize available resources, such as the school counselor and other professionals, to assist the student in disclosing their undisclosed gender identity to their parents or guardians. Again, after further education, there still exists a specific identifiable or substantiated concern. We will honor that student's request that that remains confidential. And I know it, it sounds paradoxical or contradictory to what we do as educators. We inform parents about everything. That's the nature of our business. We want to be engaged. We want to be fully transparent. But there, there is a time, and this would be one of those times, where we simply want to make sure of the student's safety. So the next paragraph talks about if the student is 18 years or older. The district will honor the student's requests to keep information regarding the student's transgender status, identity, gender expression, transition process, preferred name, and preferred pronouns confidential from the student's parents or guardians, other students, and/or other third parties. So there is a distinction between 18 being an adult and 17 and under, how we will work through that process. The next piece I would like to draw to your attention. Dr. Shab talked about our grades pre-K through five and six through 12. And six through 12 is just an affirmation of what I've shared in the previous three paragraphs. And that is, again, I'm reading from grades six through 12, that section. The student should be made aware, information about the student's transgender status, transition process, gender identity, gender expression, preferred name, and preferred pronouns will be disclosed to the student's parents or guardians if the student is under the age of 18. However, if reasonably possible, prior to notification, to any parent or guardian, school staff should work closely with the student to assess the degree to which, if any, the parent guardians will be involved in the process. And again, goes back to the safety of the student. So I don't want to reread that because I'll have read it three or four times by the time we're done. So those would be the substantive changes to the administrative regulation. The board does not have to approve that. But we just wanted to let you know and inform you that we've made those modifications. We did have legal input regarding, regarding the changes that we've made. And I think these will stand on merit until the next court case, depending on what level that court case is. And, you know, one of the things that one of our attorneys said that was pretty interesting in one of our meetings was because this hasn't risen to the level of the Supreme Court, that these have been lower court decisions, this is going to be really fluid. You might see this policy and administrative regulation back in front of you at some point in the future. So until we hear from the, the top justices in the country, this is what we have for you today.
Are there any comments or questions?
One question. At what point does a, does consideration to filing a 960 with the county come into play? And this language about lead to child abuse, neglect, or other illegal conduct, just that's, in my head, that's a pretty high standard that I would maybe want some other involvement? Is there, is that part of a separate policy?
I wouldn't say it's part of a separate policy or regulation attached to this, but it would be like any other 960 that we would file. And those are usually pretty serious matters when we go through county. So that, that would be a step that we would take if necessary. Can I answer your question, Mr. Larson? Or am I on cross, am I being cross-examined now?
No, not at all. No, it's just, it's, it's, well, certainly filing a 960 is, is pretty serious most of the time, but not always. And then certainly at the hospital where I'm employed, it's encouraged to err on the side of caution. And if we have a specific and identified threat to a kid, it feels like we might be at that level. It's obviously as a judgment call by the people receiving the information. But it's just sort of the education surrounding filing of a 960 would really kind of tie in pretty close to this. Because if that, that kid who's going through, you know, pretty real issues, the support there, and it's, that's hard, very difficult decisions and judgment calls to be made. But I'm just curious if there, what education to maybe on 960s there is.
And even before a 960, a phone call would probably be made about the safety and security of the student. And that student's team, counselor, principal, associate principal would be heavily involved in that. And likely, there would be a call to Ms. Galatch or Dr. Lewis to determine, you know, whether or not the student should even go home.
And Director Larson, I think you asked a question about do we train our staff on mandatory reporting? We do require that. And in fact, that's in process right now, and it has to be completed by each staff member and uploaded into our system for verification by October 1, I believe it is. I'm looking at you because you're better at dates than I am.
Any additional questions, comments? Okay, go ahead.
My question would be just, just the continued training of, of like, you can't make guesses about things that we're not informed on, right? So it goes back to the 960. And I know people are informed on, you know, and we need to report and those kinds of things. But I think, I know that there was some training done, but just continue training for our staffs to, to be well-versed in transitioning and gender equity and, and those kinds of things. So just, just a comment that I think we still have work to improve in this area.
Thank you. Moving on to item F, Critical Shortage Adjustment for Paraeducators, part of our strategic plan area three. Mr. Baumback?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Flynn, members of the board. Like so many key positions within our district, paraeducators are critical to, to the district and its functioning. Our paraeducators are staff members that support students with disabilities in educational setting. You know, additionally, paraeducators are essential in helping us meet federal and state regulatory requirements. And so, you know, for this reason, we wanted to draw your attention to a critical shortage that the district is, is facing. We are currently 90 paraeducators down from where we would like to be. And the memo on the last page of the board packet articulates just a little bit more information here. Of those openings, approximately 54 openings are for inclusion paras and 36 of those are for program paras. Inclusion paras support students who have disabilities and receive the majority of their education in the general education classroom, whereas program paras support students who are in self-contained programs, such as our classrooms for students with autism or students with emotional disturbance. With the number of opening paraeducator, a number of open paraeducator positions, both our special education and general education teachers are stretched with providing students with what they need. Teachers may lose their prep time or lunch, and sometimes both. And to effectively support our teachers, students, and building administrators, we need to provide support to help fill these open positions. So both to recognize the additional workload that's shifted to current paraeducators due to these shortages and to help recruit more paraeducators to the district, the administration's recommending the equivalent of a $1 per hour Critical Shortage Adjustment capped at $500 per employee per semester for the fiscal year 2022-2023. Anticipate the impact on the budget would be between an additional $146,000 to $186,000 per semester. So that's $372,000 over the course of this next fiscal year, primarily in those wages. But this would be extremely dependent on our ability to fill the vacant roles. So it's worth noting that if we were to continue with the open positions we have currently over the course of the year, we would be under budget somewhere around, you know, just north of $2 million. So the pay-for is in that as we go without, you know, that's, that's a savings on the budget, but it certainly is a cost. but it certainly is a cost on the, on the folks in those classrooms. So just to wrap up my comments, I would point out that Dr. Lissa Niedrich, our Executive Director of Special Education, has sat through the meeting here to emphasize the importance of this conversation. And if you have questions about the current conditions, I, I am certain she's better equipped to answer those questions than myself. But I'd be happy to stand for any you may have for me.
Are there any questions on this agenda item? Go ahead, Cynthia.
I don't really have a question necessarily, except my, my technical question would be when, when will the dollar per hour increase begin? Will it, will, for, for our current para-professionals, who are certainly deserving of, of that, if not more, actually?
If you were to make this change, it would be in place immediately and retroactive to the start of the school year. It would be something that would accumulate over all hours of the semester. And if you reach the cap, but it would be a December payout of whatever amount each paraeducator comes to, and then a similar payout at the end of the year, end of May.
So it's my, my, as having sat on the committee that looks at para-professional salaries, I think this is long overdue. I mean, people can go work at Wendy's starting at $15. I've, I'm seeing $17 now at many fast food places. We, we are underpaying our para-professionals. And our para-professionals do a, a really great job for the district. So, I, I mean, I, I'm biased. I only, I, I do have some very close contacts who are para-professionals. But even sitting in on that meeting as a board member over the years, you just see their compassion and their heart that they give to these, to these positions. So I applaud this. I would make the motion to approve it.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second? Second by Bill. Any questions or comments? Go, we'll do Melissa first and then.
Okay, so that I understand. So when I get asked about this, so their paychecks right now won't change? It's, they're going to get like a bonus check in December and a bonus check at the end of the year? If I understood you correctly?
I would say that, that understanding is correct if you'll let me just articulate it a different way. It's Critical Shortage Adjustment, and so that it would be a one-time payout of those hours accumulated over the semester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Joe.
That, my question is different now. The, so this isn't increasing the salary for the next year and the next year. It's just a one-time payout is what, that's what we're listening to? Okay. And then the second part of it is, the $500 cap, is that a, what's, what's the purpose of a $500 cap if we're rewarding on an hourly basis? And what would the difference be if we just said a dollar per hour for every hour?
To your question, Board Member Larson, is that it, it actually is, it would be limited in the number of hours. You know, most of these paraeducators are 32 hours, maybe less or more. When you couple the scenarios we ran, I don't know that you would really exceed that greatly. And capping at $500 is something that's in line with even what we've, we've seen with peer districts as well. We could certainly explore something like that. But not knowing necessarily what the long-term vision from the board is on this conversation, to have a Critical Shortage Adjustment seemed like a way that we could act very quickly to address the situation with maybe there's, maybe there's a longer-term conversation that needs to take place.
The, the other thing that we're undergoing right now is a study, a peer review study of, you know, our classified staff and our principal group and our directors. So public sector is gonna be doing that work for us. So if we made the adjustment right now to, to the hourly wage of our paras, it would, it would aggravate our whole category system. That doesn't mean that's not the reason to do it, but we thought this was probably the cleanest way to do it in December and May. And then as we're having this review, the consultant will come back and say, look, you're short in this category, you're short in this category. Probably won't hear them say, you're paying too much in this category. But we know to Dr. Shab's point, $19 an hour, you know, at a place where I get pet food, starting. So we, we know what we're competing against. But we also, just as a, just a skinny reminder of the, the guardrail document that the board worked on previous to our newest board members, we're wanting to make sure we keep those guardrails in place so that we have something on the table for our bargaining groups this spring.
We'll go Cynthia first.
So where does the money come from? Is it special? So is this Critical Shortage Adjustment some special funding, like Esser dollars? Or is, is it coming from the general fund? And I, I, I appreciate board members because I, I really didn't get that it was just this immediate year.
So, so paraeducators are paid from a, a number of different sources, with the bulk of those being coming from, coming from the general fund? If you're concerned mostly about, you know, how are we affording it within the budget? It's, it's really in the fact that as they go every day, open, those open positions at 90, positions paid at whatever rate is, we're accumulating the savings each day that goes by. An important part to remember about that is that the deficit that we need to be providing for our students and, and the support we need amongst other staff the whole time well, too.
What does it look like when you apply? So you, you, you learn of, you get a $500 ending in December and May?
Yeah, it's, this would be a function of the business office and the accounting function. And so as they're putting their time in, we're calculating that figure. And then it would simply be, the, the adjustment would be paid out in December for the first semester, and then in May for the second.
So it caps at 500, so it's not just like the bonus? If someone started the beginning of school, it would apply a dollar to their salary that they would pay out? If someone started December 1, it would be a different amount? Is that accurate?
Yes, thank you.
Melissa?
Well, I think my question would have answered, because then I was, I was gonna ask, because I'm sure it'll come up. So the new hires, are they starting at a dollar more an hour? But they're not. They're just earning this payout, just like everybody else. So they'll start whatsoever on the agreement right now and then, or the meet-and-confer agreement, and then they'll work towards this same payout then essentially.
Yeah, that's exactly correct. Everybody, whether you're new or have been here and, and, and working hard for longer than the new ones, you get the same opportunity to earn that adjustment.
Other questions or comments?
I, I agree with, I think it's a step in the right direction. But I, I think, gosh, being in the classroom without some of the paras I've had, oh my goodness. Yeah, paras just really make the difference between a great day and a terrible one. So I, I think the, the more we can appreciate our paras and make them feel like they're earning more than somebody who's serving up hamburgers at Coles, I, I think that's a good thing. And I understand we have to stay true to our budget and keep, keep everybody employed. I understand that. But, so I, I applaud the efforts to go forward and to appreciate paras in that regard, so.
I just have a couple of comments. Knowing that it's only 22 to 23, next year will be a bargaining year, next, the spring semester. And so, you know, I, I certainly think that this issue will be discussed and addressed. But I think that it's really important, if we're going to make this adjustment now, that we don't fall back, that we're only moving forward. Ironically, on Friday, in the newspaper, there was an article that broke down the cost of living in Grand Forks for a, a two-bedroom rental. And of course, the school district doesn't have a say in what housing prices do. But I think we have an obligation to our employees to at least get them to a level that they can afford a two-bedroom apartment in Grand Forks at $1,642 an hour. And so I, I, I think as we look to not only staff shortages, but our current employees and the rates of pay, as it then relates to cost of living in our, in our city, that those are important data points that we can look to. And, you know, obviously, we have the Guiding Change Document, and that's important to stay within those boundaries. But I do think that using some of those benchmarks, like were in that article, it's important that we're, we're looking to get to those levels or above.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Dr. Brenner, any announcements?
I have two. The board education that we postponed this evening for our mentoring session will resurrect on September 26. So at 5 o'clock, we'll have the Diversity, Equity, Inclusivity, and Belonging Session, 5 o'clock on September 26. And also, I think you probably received a communication, board members, from Tyler Nelson and Tony Beena regarding your invitation to the Cushman Classic. Looking at people? Okay, a few people are nodding, great. That's this Friday evening, the football game at Cushman Field. And usually, your, your enlistment of, of help is around serving whatever food they have in the parking lot. So right next to the Eagles Arena, if you're able to make it, thank you.
Any board member announcements? Go ahead.
There's also a special event on Saturday, the 17th, the Special Olympics Kickoff Ceremony is at 12:30 at South Middle School. So if you're able to take that in as well, it'd be fantastic.
Other announcements?
I've been getting a lot of feedback from teachers that have appreciated the board members who have been able to have the time to stop in the schools and see what they're dealing with. So thank you, and I just ask to keep making the time to be able to go in and see what's going on and meet the teachers and the staff.
Any announcements from our Grand Forks Board member, Grand Forks Air Force Base member?
Nothing here, thank you.
Any board requests for future consideration? At some point, it might be nice to hear a busing update on ridership, now that we've gone to waiving those costs. I'm, I'm just curious to see if we have more, more interested parties or more people riding the bus. Okay, Josh, school board norms, how'd we do?
I'd say we did very well.
Okay, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.